Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Regan?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Moreau?
Here. All right, and on to, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept or approve Consent Agenda Item 3A, 3C, 3D as amended, 3E through 3K, and 3M through 3Q.
Second.
All right, motion's made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is unanimous. Uh, there are no items removed from the consent agenda? I'm sorry, there are two items removed from the consent agenda, and just, uh, so you're aware, so item number 12 about the, the park benches was removed from the agenda. All right, so now on to item 3B. Uh, regarding the ARPA funds. And the municipal library equipment, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. No, that's all right, please, please move forward. How are you?
Good.
Very well. If you could do me a favor, just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes. Let me start off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, questions on this item? Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. How are you? Good, good. So, my question on this item, so, the, the library received ARPA funds, and then it looks like there's an additional request for $12,250, but is, and from my understanding, you didn't spend the initial amount that you were given, so can you just explain how the second request came to be? Thank you.
So, we have...
No, Mr. Scarp, I don't think your mic is on.
Thank you.
There you go.
First time.
Yeah.
That's all right.
So, we have, we were granted $100,000 of ARPA funding for the digital navigators. That grant funding ro, runs through October 31st. Um, due to a current staff vacancy, so we have, we had a wonderful part-time navigator who accepted a full-time job elsewhere. So, due to that vacancy, we are now expecting that we will have some unspent funds at the end of the grant funding. So, we're actually not requesting additional funds. We're requesting that any unspent funds from, that we have already received, um, once we know exactly how much will be underspent, we're requesting that we could, uh, change the use for that, um, and put it towards the collaborative equipment that I outlined in the request, up to the $12,200. So, it would go towards something that would be meaningful for the community, hopefully in keeping with ARPA funding, um, instead of, of returning it.
Okay, and then, just for the Law Department, um, is that, have we had anyone else in that situation where they received money for a specific grant, didn't use all those funds, and then wanted to change the use? Has that happened?
Yeah, you've done that a few times.
Okay.
So, and, you know, what happened is, uh, we haven't met yet.
We haven't met in person, but we spoke on the phone about this a couple days ago.
So, originally she was asking for the additional ARPA funds for this purpose, and, um, the controller asked me a question about it, and I said, gee, maybe we should ask the library, do they expect to expend all the funds? Because at this point in everyone's grant, I'm starting to go to all of the recipients and say, don't forget, you, there's a deadline, how are you on, are you on track and whatnot? And so, I said, well, why don't we just ask her? Maybe there's something, and it turns out that they're going to have those funds within the, um, the grant. So, we have, the council has approved that. Each one, each time that's happened, it's come to the council.
Okay, I just want to make sure, um, that we're being consistent, because it looked like, from, from what we saw, it looked like it was an additional request on top of, you know, on top of the request, but it's, it's unspent funds we're using for a different use.
Correct.
And I'm assuming these, this use meets the criteria, all the ARPA criteria.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And you know, I, I failed to call for a motion on this one, uh, so I'll move that we consider and approve the, the change in, um, of ARPA appropriation as, as noted.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, on to Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you. Good evening, Sunny. Nice to see you. Um, you know, the Navigator program, um, basically, if I recall correctly, you know, we were all of a sudden hit with the pandemic, and you had elderly people who had some idea of what the internet was, but when they were forced to live off of it, you know, you had all those people that were, were lost. And the Navigator program, if I recall correctly, is to hire someone to help these people learn about the internet and, and how to survive in those times. And I gotta tell you, um, you know, Counselor, um, Reynolds and I sat on the ARPA committee, and it was one of the first applications that we did. And I was sitting there, and I was saying, you know, this is exactly four corners what this money should be used for. So, you know, I overwhelmingly approved that. And, and certainly what's before us here today, when I looked at the backup, it's not like, you know, we had an application months ago where the original application just didn't fit, and, and, and I said at the time it didn't fit, and then they realized it didn't fit, and then they came to us with something totally different. Here, you know, the way I see it, you've met the four corners, you have money left over, you still want to help the community, how can I not support? So, you know, I just wanted that known, and I, I appreciate what, uh, this and the Navigator program is gonna provide for the town, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I have to say that, the, the feedback on the digital navigators has been incredible, for exactly the reason that you said, you know, we've, I've gotten thank you letters from folks who said, you know, I went to the DMV, they told me I have to do this online, I don't even have an email address, what do I do? And to have someone that can sit down next to them and, and walk them through it step by step without rushing, and making them feel really comfortable, and empowering them to do some of it on their own next time. It's really transformational for a lot of people, so thank you for your support. It's what we're here to, it's what we're all here to do.
Anyone else? Members of the public? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Moreau?
Yes, and motion is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And next, I'll take a motion on 3L, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a bid waiver to contract AHP for $25,000 to conduct the Wallingford Community Health Improvement Plan.
All right. Motion's made in second. If you'd like to step forward, Ms. Batista. Good evening.
Good evening. Vanessa Bautista, Director of Health.
Thank you. All right, the floor is yours. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening. So, I was looking over this, um, your letter, and I just, whenever there's a bid waiver, I kind of always question, you know, why we're, you know, why we're doing a bid waiver. Um, and it looks like the letter mentioned that there was kind of a time constraint, um, so I just wanted to kind of just go over for the sake of everybody, you know, what the, the purpose of the bid waiver is, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Um, so the time constraint right now is the fact that the Community Health Improvement Plan, the CHIP, it needs to be done based on the Community Health Assessment Plan, which was done last year, December 2023. And if we wait around anymore, um, we'll have to wait and, uh, ba, base it on a Community Health Improvement Plan that's outdated. So, that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure that we get it in on time, so then that way, the Community Health and, Health Assessment Plan, the CHA, is based on a updated plan and not an outdated plan, because if we do go out for bid, then it's gonna be longer than a year.
Okay. Did, what was the reason we didn't go out to bid sooner? Was there a delay? Was there some sort of a delay?
Because we didn't think that we would have the funding.
Okay, so you're waiting for, for the next fiscal year?
Uh, well, we didn't know that we were gonna receive the funding, the opiate settlement funding.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was something that we received not too long ago, about a month ago.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Understood. Yeah, that was, that was my only question, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to say, like I said, whenever there's a bid waiver, we just like to kind of, you know, let the public know why, why there's a bid waiver. So, um, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Members of the public? I will take a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. I think you have more business with us later on.
Yep. I'll be around.
All right, moving on to the public question and answer period. Uh, does anyone have questions for the council? Please. Oh, you can use the mic over here. And, uh, your name and address for the record, please.
Herb Jackson, Wallingford, uh, with, uh, WPAA. How's everybody doing this evening?
Good. How are you?
I can't complain. Uh, basically, the reason I'm here this evening is that, uh, on the 19th, we asked for support on a matter valued at $285,000 of Wallingford Cable.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, if you could just lean into the microphone a little better. Uh, they're not picking you up.
Is that better?
Better.
Okay. On the 19th, uh, excuse me, on the 19th, we asked for support on a matter valued at $285,000 of Wallingford Cable subscribers passed through dollars. Nobody replied. We were wondering why this wasn't put onto the agenda.
Yeah, so, agenda items would be, if someone had requested to put it on the agenda. Uh, I didn't take your email as a request to have an agenda item, um, but we certainly could put it on the next agenda.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, now, the way that was sent to you the first time, was that the proper way of doing it, or was there some type of error or anything?
Yeah, so, when you said you were looking for support, my understanding was that you were looking for support in a, um, in a non-official town council sense? So, you, there's some kind of a resolution that you're looking to have passed?
Not really.
Oh, you know, feel free to reach out to me, though. I'm happy to talk to you about how we can best meet your needs.
I'll tell you what, if we can get it on the agenda again, then I can prepare a statement at that point in time for the next meeting.
Yeah, so what, what, is there something you're looking to have passed?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you and I speak then after the meeting? Um, I have your email, so I'm happy to get in touch with you, and we can, we can talk about, you know, what your needs are, and see about getting it.
Not a problem. So, you want to talk this af, after the meeting tonight, or you wanna?
Or I can get in touch with you tomorrow, or at a later date, that would be fine.
Okay.
All right.
Fine. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Susan Hizenga, 36 Surrey Drive, but most of the time at 28 South Orchard Street, tethered to the building. Um, following up on that same topic, um, I just want to be clear that in 20, 2008 and 2010, WPA made an effort to get on the agenda for support related to this matter, and, uh, did not get on the agenda. Um, we were told that it was a matter in conflict with the town, so we wanted to be clear, um, that it is or is not in conflict with the town now. Um, and it is subscriber fees. It's not, um, it's revenue that, I want to be clear that everyone understands that there's a cable bill, and on that cable bill, there is a fee. It's not a tax, and it passes through to providers of community television. So, it's not the cable company's money. It's the people of Wallingford's money that we're asking potentially be restored. And there was a in-depth study in 2023 that happened at the state level that actually surfaced, uh, data that wasn't previously available in the 2008 and 2010 timeframe. So, there's new evidence that what might, might have been done, in our opinion, was not, and, was in conflict with the law. And it cost Wallingford subscribers approximately $285,000, which is more than the cost that we put into our building. So, we do hope we can get on the agenda with a, a firm resolution of support from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Comerford?
Bill Comerford, Broadview Drive. Um, I sent you guys a, a couple snippets of the meetings, um, of this past year budget, plus the prior year when I did ask about the trash pickup, because it was alleged that I never did ask the question. So, I wanted you guys to see the video, in fact, confirming that I asked for over a year, or it's going on two years, to get that number. So, I'm gonna ask the chair to the mayor, can we get that number, which is how much it costs the taxpayers for two guys to drive around to pick up trash, and then on the weekends, when it gets shifted to possibly maintainer three and fours, how much it costs the taxpayers collectively per year? Can we get that number for the, for the next town council meeting by chance?
I'll look into it. I'm not gonna promise that it'll, uh, I'll have it for the next meeting, but I will look into it.
Okay, so we, we should be able to get it relatively soon. Next couple of meetings is good?
Sure.
Okay, and, and one other question, then, uh, same thing, chair to the mayor. Um, do you know, 'cause I, I read where Cheshire applied for a grant for their splash pad, and they got it, and they're in the midst of putting up another splash pad in the town of Cheshire. Have we as a town, 'cause I think that you had stated, I could be wrong, that we have a full-time grant writer, did, have we applied for a grant for a splash pad? And where is it in the, uh, the pipeline?
So, if, if I am recalling correctly, I think that the grant that you are talking about, um, was, um, state ARPA money. And I don't believe that there was a request for grant applications for that. I think that occurred through the legislative process. So, um, that's my perception, but I'm happy to look into what the source of those funds were. Um, we, since January, we've been actively looking for grants that would support that type of recreational project. Um, and I don't, I don't recall that there was an opening of a grant application for the money that Cheshire got, but I'll look into it.
Okay, so, in a, in a couple of meetings, we should have the answer for both of those.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Michael?
Jason Michael, Meadow Street. I'm, I'm, I'm here, 'cause I, I didn't think it was worthy to ask for an agenda item for this, but, um, I've, I've been following the, the basketball court installation since they were announced last year. Uh, the price tag is what made my ears prick up. They're, they're post-tensioned concrete basketball courts at Doolittle. They're $180,000 apiece. So, I watched them, and I watched them prep it. It's a neat system. They're different than most concrete, 'cause they have high-tension wiring through them. It's supposed to prevent heaving, and it's like a Ferrari of basketball courts. Um, so I've watched them, and, and they poured them last year in the fall. They went through the winter, and then they were coated. And I, I went down to see them afterwards, and I had noticed that there were hundreds, if not thousand, blisters in the coating. And the line striping was two and a half feet off the center. There was a, on the upper court, there's a, a concrete skirt that goes around it that was cracked in six, seven places. So, it was concerning, and, uh, I, I took the advice of, of a few counselors here that have said in the past, call the department and find, you know, ask your questions. So, I did. I called the engineering department, and I spoke with the town engineer, and I, I asked if they were aware of it, and they said yes. And then I, I had heard that there was going to be a meeting with the subcontractor. So, I said that. I heard there's going to be a meeting. Can I come to the meeting? I don't want to say anything. I just want to see how this process gets rectified with such a big price tag and such an obvious failure. And I was told it's not a public meeting. I said, okay, you know, but can I come? And I was told it's not a public meeting, and then I said, well, how, how about if I ask as, as a member of the Building Maintenance Committee? I figured it's part of the, we're gonna go up there and see it anyway officially, and then present it to you. And I was told that, you know, that, that they'd have to go through legal and call, and I, I said, please, don't waste your company time. I'll, I'll call and find out. And, and I was told, well, no, we have to call the mayor instead. I said, again, don't waste your time. You're on the clock. I'll call. And I was told, we'll call you back with an answer. And I waited a week. No call. I knew the meeting was coming, so I called. And I got someone else in engineering, and that person told me, it's not a public meeting. And I said, I know. It's not, I heard. I said, I need to know the answer to whether or not I can just go and, and observe the meeting. I was put on hold for five minutes, and then I was told, there is no meeting. And lo and behold, there was a meeting. The contractor was sent back out there, so of course, I'm interested now. I go look at the results of the fix, which was abysmal, fully scraping a brand-new coating off in the bubbles of the hundreds, touching it up, repainting. I, I sent pictures to the general, uh, council email box. I'm not sure how, how often you're getting them, but I sent them today. I thought of it last minute. I talked to the neighbor who abuts the lower basketball court, which is the one that's really, really bad. He says, there's guys out there putting needles in the bubbles and pushing them down. So, I see all the touch-ups. There's no bubbles. I go back a week later. There's 300 bubbles again. So, I'm not here to tattle on a department. I'm just, I, I did what you asked. That was the treatment I got. This is a $180,000 basketball court. It's like, you bought a Ferrari, and you got milk crates for seats. These basketball courts can be poured with asphalt for $20,000. They last 10 to 12 years. This $180,000 basketball courts we're doing, and two more in the pipeline, are warranted for 20. Now, quick math, maybe with inflation, we could pour asphalt basketball courts for 70 years. Every decade, one. We have these things, and I called back. Has the company been paid? Yes. There's like an $8,000 holdback. I don't know if it's pretty common or not. But, so now, I'm not gonna call the department again, 'cause I wasn't, I wasn't really dealt with in an honest way. So, I'm here letting you know, there's a basketball court we paid $180,000 for that's been paid and is failing right now. So, I don't know where else to go. It, this is where I've come, and, and I guess you can take it as you wish, but there's another one scheduled for Pregnant Park. There's another one, I believe, scheduled for Community Lake. That's four. That's nearly three-quarters of a million dollars for basketball courts. And later on in this agenda, we're gonna be talking about leasing out parking spots. If you'll excuse me, I'll, I'll pick up the penny on the ground as the gold bullion flies over my head, 'cause that's what it feels like. Three-quarters of a million dollars for basketball courts, and they're bad. The concrete skirt cracked in seven places. The company came back and caulked it. I'm not a concrete guy, but I don't know if that's gonna hold. I don't think so. I certainly am a coatings guy. I've had a painting company for 25 years. You can't just stop the problem by scraping off blisters. I don't know what to do with these. I'm not a post-tensioned concrete guy or the coatings that they put down, but common sense would say, hey, you need to strip this off clean, and we need to do it again, 'cause there's a reason it happened. And just because they fixed it for the time being and got their check, doesn't mean it's gonna stop. And the fact, I guess, to wrap up, that no one got to see the meeting for the, how it got rectified, or how the company, what the company was gonna do, is really frustrating, because I, I went through the proper channels. I did the, I was kind and polite and waited time and didn't press, the, they're busy, I get it. But then to be, to handled, to be handled in that matter and been told there is no meeting, never told I couldn't, if, if Janice called and said, you can't go to those meetings, fine. If the mayor called and said, no, you're not going to the, fine. But I was just never told, and that was my result of calling the department. So, now I'm here just letting you know, there is a huge issue up there, or down there, wherever, the lower part of Doolittle, that is, that is not going to stop. And this company is now to the wind. I don't know if they're contracted to do the next ones. I don't know if the next ones are coming or when, but I know I, I had heard that Pregnant is on the list, and Community, Community Lake is as well. So, that's, that's another quick $360,000 we're ready to dish out. So, I just thought you should be made aware.
I appreciate it. So, I, I know that, um, Mr. Michaels and I know that Ms. Kapaczynski both knows about the issues of the, the one you discussed, 'cause I know that there was some kind of remediation. I don't know where it's going as of right now, but, uh, I know they're aware of it, but I'll be happy to follow up on it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will close the public question and answer period. Uh, discussion of old business. Uh, Mayor, do you have an update on technology?
Uh, I do. In fact, uh, Mr. Winters is here tonight, and, uh, he's agreed to indulge me and participate in the update on technology. Um, but I'm gonna ask him to give you, come up, have a seat, and give you a brief summary of, uh, some of the work he's done to date.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Winters.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Andrew Winters, Director of Information Technology for the town of Wallingford. And it's, uh, my pleasure to join you. My pleasure to join you on this journey as we upgrade the services for the residents of the town, improve security, and, uh, make things more accessible for the employees as well. Uh, some of the things that we're, uh, doing is, are, are looking at, uh, the security baselines to begin with. Um, once I came on board, we did an assessment of, uh, things like antivirus, firewalls, backups, um, and some of the other critical systems that the town runs on, whether they're connected to the internet or not, because we have several networks in the town. Uh, and we found some areas that definitely need improvement, and others that are actually pretty good. Uh, so we've started with the, uh, basics of improving our endpoint protection and server protection. So, that is in the works, and a bid will be going out on Thursday for, uh, improved antivirus software and malware detection for all the computers, and that would be servers as well as, uh, computers on people's desks. Uh, we've also talked to vendors about, um, improved firewalls, next-generation firewalls, which would, um, enhance the security on our networks, uh, not only for traffic coming in and out of the internet, but, uh, traffic, uh, sideways as well, among computers behind the firewall. Uh, we've also had discussions with vendors about improving our backups. Uh, we've found some departments that are very good at backups, and others that are, uh, need a little bit, uh, a little bit better enhanced systems, um, without revealing too much, of course. Um, so, we're looking for a, a single solution that allows us to back up all servers automatically on a regular basis. on a regular basis, along with redundant backups in the cloud where everything's encrypted. And that would allow us to hopefully recover quickly if there's any kind of incident as far as malware, or virus, or any kind of intrusion, or protect us in case there's some sort of other disaster, which could be another pandemic where we can't get into the building, or a fire that occurs in the town hall where we can't get into the building. Some of these systems would be available in the cloud that at least the managers and the town council, mayor's office, et cetera, could access from outside the building if they needed to. So it's part of an overall disaster recovery and business continuity plan. We've been working with some of the other regional groups as far as town and state governments who provide cybersecurity information to the towns. And so we've started to put a plan into place. But really, my first goal is to fix some of the building blocks of security so that we can protect ourselves as best as possible as we move forward with the new technology.
Great. Thank you very... So this format doesn't really lend to question and answer, but I really appreciate your update. These are all exciting things for Wallingford, because this is all stuff that's kind of new to us. So we appreciate you being here and your hard work.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
He's also been developing specs for a lot of the hardware upgrades that will occur. So that's also welcome.
So the next time, Mayor, the next time we would expect to see Mr. Winters in terms of activity in the department?
I'm sorry. Are you asking if you're going to...
Future agenda items and stuff. Well, because ideally, it would be nice to get him on an agenda, have him like, take questions and stuff. And we could throw it on at any time, but if you had something in the works, you know, we can certainly wait for that. So I was just trying to tip your hand a little bit.
Yeah, no, a couple of months, we should be able to have a bit more to talk about.
Okay.
He is going to stick around and talk about one of the bid waiver items tonight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Mayor, an update on Hidden Brook Lane? I'm sorry.
You can do it.
I'll defer.
So I have heard nothing from council, but I have two possible solutions that I'm researching and getting some advice about. And if it comes to fruition, then I'll elaborate as to what they are, but I think I might have two different avenues that maybe solves if not all of it, but most of it. So I'm waiting for a report back as to some questions that I've asked some experts to.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and good luck. Item number seven. I'll take a motion on number seven?
Mr. Chairman... It's kind of hard for me, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the following, a revision to the Food Establishment Ordinance, Chapter 122. There is an amendment that we were all handed tonight. That amendment, I'm also including in my motion that amendment, which is to page seven of the not redlined version after item 7H, which is after the first sentence. So this is basically just saying that the fee schedule would be recommended by the health director and approved by the town council when there are such fees.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. I will open the public hearing. Ms. Batista, did you have something you wanted to start with, or did you just want to take questions?
I can take questions.
All right. Anyone on the council have questions about the ordinance?
I do. I believe you've already told me about this, but just for the purposes of the record, this is a change that's basically mandated by statute.
Correct.
And this took effect, or takes effect on the 28th, if passed, obviously?
Well, yes. If passed, it will take effect after it's been posted for the 30 days and all that.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fishbein?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where the amendment goes. I... In our packet, we have the redlined version. I heard a reference to the non-redlined version, which...
Do you have the non... Do you have the non-one?
I didn't in the packet, but I could probably follow along looking at the redlined version.
I think it's on 12 in the...
It's 12?
I think that's where it is, on the redlined version. Oh, I find actually it's not numbered. Do you want my copy of the...
I guess if that gets me to the right place. I'm just trying to figure out where the insertion happens. Okay, just so that we don't have dead air. Reading this together, it would be on page seven, fees and penalties. The existing language is, all fees and penalties are defined on the Health Department fee schedule. And then we're inserting this line, the Health Department fee schedule shall be recommended by the health director and approved by the town council. And then we go back. Okay, so that seems to work. So then the question is, the fee schedule, is that part of what is before us as far as amendment tonight? Or is that something that's to be done in the future, or we're not changing that at all?
Well, we are updating our fee schedule tonight, but the intention was for later on to just update the fee schedule at its own document rather than the whole ordinance.
Cool. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you. I return Janice's original.
All right. Any other questions? Any members of the public with questions on the change in ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson? Yes. Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes. Motion's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. All right. Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding a collective bargaining agreement with the WEPCU, Nutmeg Independent Labor Unions. Good evening, Mr. Hutt.
Good evening, Jim Hutt, Town HR Director. I'm here tonight to seek your approval for a five-year contract with the electric production clerical workers. The duration of the contract would be from September 1, 2020 to August 31, 2025. The changes, the substantive changes are for health insurance effective upon ratification. Employee cost share would go to 16% and then 17% effective January 1, 2025, effective upon ratification. Employees in the clerical unit, seniority unit, would have a copay for prescription drug coverage once the deductible was met. It also provides for family dental coverage for production employees effective upon ratification. The wages, effective and retro to 9, 1, 2020, 2% effective and retro to 9, 1, 21, 2% effective and retro to 9, 1, 2022, 2.5%. And that would be the same for 9, 1, 23, and then effective 9, 1, 24. I did provide a memo on June 14 that outlines some wage adjustments for a variety of positions and effective and retro to 9, 1, 23 for those positions that did not receive a wage adjustment. All other positions in the bargain unit would be increased at top step, $1.50 an hour, with the same percentage differences between steps for positions with multiple steps. And there's also an increase in safety footwear. It also provides for a 457 plan for production unit employees and mutual assistance language for when our linemen go work for other utilities. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions? Mr. Laffin?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hutt, thank you.
Yes.
I don't really have any questions, but I wanted to make a motion to approve the collection bargaining agreement between the town of Wallingford and WEPCU, Nutmeg Independent Labor Unions, effective from September 1 to 2020 to August 31, 2025.
Second.
And I know we don't always make a motion on union agreements, but this one has gotten a lot of attention. There's been a lot of concerns, and I think it's important that we show, not just the community, but these guys that we have out there, that what we've been saying all along at all these meetings is that we are behind them. We do support them, and that we had these hurdles or hoops to go through, hurdles to go over, hoops to go through. So I just wanted to make that motion, make it clear, and thank you for working with all these guys in the union. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Testa?
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, I see, first of all, the duration of the contract, September 2020.
Yes, that's correct.
So we've got some catching up to do.
Yes.
This is all coming from the electric division funds.
That's correct.
Whatever has to, needs to be paid. Runs through August 31, 2025, which is really a year away. So I'm assuming that we've just settled the contract, and you're going to go right back into negotiations for the next one. When does that begin?
So we reached a tentative agreement on June 3, and we'll be back at the table sometime after the 1st of the year.
Okay. Hopefully, we can get that done. I guess I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit here. Is there a feeling that... Or what is your feeling regarding how this may or may not improve our ability to draw in or keep valuable employees based on the competitive nature of the field that they're in with the profit companies that are out there? So how close are we to being competitive with Eversource and these other companies, and keeping the good people that we train? And we want... And they want to stay here, but sometimes the money says otherwise.
So when we did look at the wage rates for the line crews, apprentices, the electricians that do the substations, we looked at how we measured up against the other public, the electric utilities in the state of Connecticut. And at the end of this contract, we will be on par with the Norwich, you know, the Norwiches, the Grotons. We'll actually be exceeding some of their wages for the linemen. What the town of Wallingford's offered that I don't think you see with the investor-owned utilities is, it's a very nice place to work. You know, you're coming to work every day. And hopefully, with the wages that we're looking at by the end of the contract, hopefully we'll be able to attract people from Eversource and from UI because of that. I appreciate that. But I can't imagine we're losing a lot of linemen to Norwich. I respect that we are competitive with other public utilities, but we're not competing with them for good people. And unfortunately, we're competing with Eversource. And I know it's a difficult place to get, and it's... I say to an employee, you know, I know you're making $7 less an hour, but jeez, this is a nice place to work. And that doesn't really sell when they're trying to pay their bills. So in general, how close are we to being more competitive with the profit companies that we're losing our linemen to? We're closer than we were, but as far as what that gap is... So I appreciate the motion to approve the contract. I think that's a very good move. It'll give us a chance to go out and, you know, post these positions with the higher wages and see where it goes. We're going back to the table right after the 1st of the year, and if we need to take a look at that again, then we will. But when we were benchmarking with the other, you know, public electric divisions, we moved along very well, and I was pleased to see that, so.
And I appreciate that. I'm saying this because I want it publicly known that if, in fact, it's true, that we are recognizing the need to be as competitive as possible with the profit utility companies out there. And this is not taxpayer money. It's ratepayer money. And I want people to know, and I want to know, that our utilities are doing whatever they can to compete strongly to keep the best people and attract the best people, especially when we train them. And that crosses various jobs in this town, but let's stick with the utilities for now. But that's all I wanted to say. I appreciate your candor and respect. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Fishbein?
Hey, Jim. So, you know, time and time again, I run into these contracts where I don't think the worker is being properly protected. When I looked at this contract, I looked at it two different ways. First was helicopter approach, skim the whole thing. And then I just like spun my mouse and got to a page. And I was like, okay, let's look at this with specificity. And I ended up on page 27 and 28. Discipline and discharge and grievance procedure. It happens to be something that's very important to all people in the public sector that have a collectively bargained contract. You know, what is my job security? What is the procedure? And I was trying to figure out, and maybe you can answer or let us know. In Section 1, it says, "The division shall advise the local union concerned in writing of any disciplinary action or discharge, which shall only be for just cause within three working days of its occurrence, specifying the reasons therefore." There's two ways of looking at its there. It's the act, or it's the discipline. Which is it?
It's the discipline.
Okay. So...
Most letters of discipline, if not all, that I've seen...
Okay.
The unions copied on the discipline.
Okay, but... Okay, so the scenario that I thought of was, John is accused of sexually harassing or inappropriately touching Jane at the workplace, right? More than likely, you're going to administratively suspend the individual, which is a disciplinary procedure, right? The investigation has not been concluded. So here, that notice to the union would happen within three days of the suspension, right?
Three days of the discipline, yes.
Yeah, of the suspension.
Sure.
But the suspension is discretionary. So the supervisor may say, well, you know, I reviewed the footage, and I don't think so. And maybe the police get involved, and they investigate. And the discipline doesn't happen until a month later when the police conclude their investigation, and maybe they substantiate. Here, in that scenario, the union would not find out until a month after the act, right? Because nothing, discipline hasn't happened, right? If you're saying the trigger, the its, is the discipline, person's still on the job, the investigation's going on, union doesn't find out until after the investigation's over, under this language, right?
Well, the way that I see this is that you have three days to notify the union of any discipline. You don't have to notify them of an investigation. You should, okay? But the language here says, within three days of the discipline being issued, the union gets notified. And as I've said, every letter I've seen, and if I don't, I certainly go back to the department head and say, copy the union on it. There's nothing wrong with so-and-so's being disciplined, suspended, written warning, you know, copy to the union president. There's... That satisfies that language.
Understood. I mean, I would probably have it interchangeable. But then we get to Section 4, where it says, "The union and the probationary employee shall have no right to challenge the termination of the probationary employee." So unless... So if the person gets suspended, a probationary employee gets suspended, is there a right to challenge? It's not a termination. It's not a termination. I have to say yes.
Based upon the language, yes.
Yeah.
I'd consult with our legal counsel, too.
Well, I.
Which I, which I do.
You end up, before the Board of Labor Relations are going to say the document speaks for itself, and it merely says termination, doesn't say suspension. And I don't think that was, I mean, we're, or I'm up here protecting, you know, the town from liability and stuff like that. Looking at the next page, particularly with regard to step four, an unusual portion of this, which you may recall, we talked about this with the fire department contract, is the you, the employee has a right to bring an arbitration even if the union objects, right? It says, "If the grievance is not satisfactory, disposed of, and it concerns interpretation or application of any of the provisions of this agreement, the employee or his union representative may submit the matter to the State Board of Mediation." It's unusual, I must admit, something that our firefighters don't have the right to do. But then the next line says, "The cost of the arbitration shall be shared by the parties." What does that mean? Is it 1% by the employee and 99% by the town? Is it 99% by the employee and 1% by the town?
No, it's 50%.
Well, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say equally shared, right? It says it will be shared, right?
Well, I mean, if that's a subject for discussion, if and when that comes up, I'm sure legal counsel from both the town and the union would be able to work this thing out. But I do understand what you're saying, but it's, everything I've seen that's been split between the union and the town has been 50-50.
Well, usually because the language says that. I've, I mean, I've been up here a while, and I've reviewed every union contract that we have, and I've never seen language like this that is undefined. And then we go on to the next section, the next sentence. Understanding that we've established that an employee has the ability to bring the arbitration, the next sentence gets rid of the employee. It says, notwithstanding the above language, 27 calendar days after the union has filed for arbitration, the town can remove it to the AAA. So what happens when the employee brings the arbitration? Can the town remove it to the AAA? That's not what this says. And I'm just, I'm going through this and trying to figure out the rights that have been, you know, negotiated for the member on behalf of, you know, with the town at the other side. And I can't, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Last but not least, if you look at section two B, I'll read it. Employees and or not more than two members or stewards from this bargaining unit, as designated by the union, shall be allowed reasonable time off without loss of pay for the purpose of adjusting grievances. I think perhaps what was meant there was addressing grievances, okay? But what is the clause, employees, which I guess could be everyone in the bargaining unit, and or not more than two members or stewards from this bargaining unit? If I look at the balance, right? That's that's what this says on paper. Can you explain what that means?
So, so what that means is the employee and two people from the union get paid time off to adjust the grievance. If there's multiple employees involved, then I would imagine they would be included in that. In 21 years, I have never had this question. And like with anything else, you know, language isn't always perfect. The parties come to an agreement on the language that they have, and then if issues do come up, the parties work them out.
I understand, and I do appear before the Board of Labor Relations and get involved in particular matters just like this. And I just bring to your attention, when you say the employees is really meant to be singular, when we look at step four, up above, the second line, they say the employee, right? Compare that with what we were just looking at that says employees in the plural. So the employee, I would agree. Whoever brings the grievance, whoever's doing the arbitration, whoever's rights are being protected, they have the right. But when you just say employees and or.
Yeah, so so the way that I would look at that, if there's one employee affected by an issue, that's the person that goes with the two stewards. If there's three or four, then all three or all four plus the two stewards go.
And I would appreciate that if it was written that way. The employee that's affected by the matter, sure, but that's clearly not what it says. So, you know, we've had this with other contracts, similar sort of stuff, and I just, you know, rank and file is not at the bargaining table. They have acceded their rights to a representative, and we are on the other side of that to a certain extent. You know, I like to represent individuals and rank and file, but somebody looking at this contract, a layperson, a lawyer, it's very difficult to cut through this and, you know, say what we're we're hoping that it said, that we intend. I would just hope that they would actually say it.
So so what I can do, the next time we sit down at the table, I can, you look at this language with our legal counsel, and we can see if there's any improvements or any modifications to be made.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We just had the exchange with Counselor Testa, you're going to be looking at this. I mean, there's other areas I didn't want to belabor. It's two pages, I think it's 56 pages in length. I don't know if the law department looks at these contracts before you go and, you know, make suggestions.
So so in the 21, soon to be 22 years I've been here, I don't think this language has ever come up, specifically what you're referring to has come up in negotiations. But if this is an issue you think is something to look at, I'd be more than happy to discuss. We're going to have a new labor council starting in July 1st anyway, so we can certainly sit down and go through that.
Oh, I appreciate that. I mean, we have the same problem with the Board of Ed with their contracts, so, and I know they have a lawyer, too. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hart, are you able to tell us what the the vote was by the union to accept this contract? Is that something you're able to tell or no?
I don't know. I just received an email from the union representative that it was, that the membership did vote to approve it.
Okay.
I don't know what the breakdown was.
Okay, I am, I heard it was overwhelmingly approved. So secondhand, I did hear that. So I just want to make the, as Counselor Laffin was saying, you know, this this came up, the electric division, and I think people were, you know, getting a little bit worried a few months ago. And I I appreciate that you addressed that, Mayor Savoni addressed that. And I, it's my understanding that the union is is pleased with this contract. They voted, they voted to approve it. So I'm just wanting to to thank you for your work on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the council? Members of the public? Mr. Comerford?
Bill Comerford, Broadway Drive. To jump on Mr. Testa's discussion, do we do exit exit interviews for employees, in this case, the utility? And if so, are they, I'm hopeful that they're written down so that you can see if there's any kind of pattern as to why. They might be saying, like Mr. Testa said, that, well, it might be a money thing, but there might be some underlying issue, too. And if it's a consistent or if there's a pattern with that, it might be extracted from the exit interview as opposed to if there's a verbal one, then it's just by memory and it's a true picture of really what the person may have said, and it's conjecture as as opposed to if it's written and it's available to the town council, the utility, general manager, or the or the director. That's the question for you, Mr. Hart.
I'm sorry, what was your question again?
Would, would, do you perform, or is there any exit interviews, written exit interviews for any of the employees, say, the town council or the department heads can see if there's any kind of pattern that says, hey, this is something that we should be addressing?
So there are occasions when we see an employee as they're leaving, you know, town employment, we may sit down and ask them a few questions about where they're going, why they're leaving, but there's nothing written down.
So so there are no technically exit interviews that that somebody could use as a resource then? In this case, with the utility that says, okay, well, it's not just a money thing, it's this. So that there would be a pattern. So that's, that's, because I'm confused. I looked at the minutes some time ago for the electric division, and I believe in the minutes, and I'll bring them next meeting, where it says that they do conduct exit interviews, and it was like an epiphany for the people that the utilities are like, really? Well, let's get them. So I I reached out to the the director, and he's like, you know what? We found out that they don't exist. We were told they did, which we didn't know. And then we went to go look at them, and now we don't have any. So maybe if we don't have them, maybe we should start looking at that, because then if you have a pattern, maybe it's, and I'm not saying this to be the case, but a habitual abuser as a department head or an employee or something, and everybody's leaving, and there's, there's a root cause to that, might be money, it could be anything, then the item could be brought out and said, hey, this is what it is. But to not have any, that's just unacceptable, in my opinion. But thank Mr. Testa for bringing that up.
Any other members of the public? Seeing them back at the council? Madam Cook, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tatta?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes, and the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
All right, on to number, number nine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a bid waiver for SmartGov online permitting system.
Seconded. Our motion is amended and seconded. Good evening, gentlemen. Kindly introduce yourselves to the record.
Good evening. Kevin Vegini, town planner.
Andrew Winters, Director of Information Technology.
Don Crouch, Economic Development Specialist.
Okay, great. Did you want to have something you wanted to start with, or you want to take questions?
Oh, we can do an introduction briefly.
Yeah, well, so kind of give you a little idea of how we got here. November, we had a monthly planning staff meeting, going through some projects, realizing information, we needed better per-user fees, so we we decided those we didn't want. And then the functionality wasn't going to meet all the different departments' needs. And then in February, we brought the rest of the departments together, the assessor, building, economic development, engineering, finance, fire, fire marshal, health, IT, planning and zoning, public works, water, sewer, wetlands. And then we started going through the different, we kind of got down to about two to three different platforms and really dove in. Each of the departments spent time researching the functionality, and Kevin will go into that a little more detail. But just kind of wanted to give you a little overview of why we were coming for a bid waiver. We talked to the purchasing agent. He was like, he mentioned, it's a little complex, you're not going to get the functionality you need. And he felt that this was a good project to ask for a bid waiver.
And I could expand on that. So right now, someone comes into my office with an application, they drop off 16 paper copies of plans, sometimes extremely large plans. Those plans have to be distributed to each department. They generally go to building, engineering, fire marshal, health, water and sewer, sometimes public works and wetlands. So those all have to be distributed manually sometimes to get the, if I get a lot of applications in every month, it takes a while to get those to other departments. This would be directly online, the applicant can log into the portal, put in the permit that they are asking for, that those, that application can then be distributed directly electronically to the other department heads. Also, for the the public, they're able to see if an application comes in, they can see real time as something is filed. And then also for, I'm trying to think here for, so building department as well, so, you know, this would be for building, this would be for health, this would be for planning and zoning, this would be for the fire marshal, wetlands, water and sewer to a lesser extent. And I guess economic development would use it, at least in a sense, to see what has come in for applications, how many building permits have been filed. So it would, it would reduce application review time between departments. As Don stated, we we want better collaboration between department heads, between departments. They'll be able to pay those fees online, it'll automatically generate reports, so we can see how many building permits have been filed, how many special permits, site plans. We could, we could kind of get an idea of better data as to how we can improve and how it will help the town, better customer service, it'll reduce counter walk-ins and phone calls. People can put in building permits, planning and zoning permits, wetland permits online. We kind of just broke down the the average cost for each face-to-face interaction costs approximately $16.90. The average cost for each telephone interaction costs approximately $6.60. And the average cost for each online interaction costs approximately 40 cents. Data integrity, centralized data storage versus files across multiple departments. So digital files will be available for each department head to to mark up and review right on there. So I no longer would have to wait for reviews to come in from each department. And obviously, it would, business operations would also continue if something happened at town hall, so this would be available online as well. So anything you want to expand on with that?
All right, questions from the council, starting with Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thankfully, we're at this point of a conversation in council chambers regarding enhancing services for the residents of the town, not just residents, but businesses as well. You've thrown, Mr. Crouch, you've thrown a lot of departments into the mix. There is a general caution for those, and I'm sure Mr. Winters will agree, that, you know, we're not looking to implement, or are we, a much larger, this is an everything system. This is a municipal operating system that we're going to base the platform for the future for us for. If the 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 subject, if the containment of the system was purely for planning and zoning, it's a yes question with, without doubt, to optimize the services associated with it. I would, scope creep is something that's very much part of these types of systems. And while the initial cost, you know, gets you in, the the fees associated with with rolling this out on a, on a townwide basis would be much more significant than that are identified here. Is the initial plan, and I'll guess, I'll ask the team, just to limit this to planning and zoning?
Yes, so this is, this is really just for the online permitting system. We did look at another system who has some of our financial and and human resources platforms. We looked at them, and it we looked at them, and it was more, like you said, we can have a consulting fee, and before you know it, the project was going to get out to here. This is very narrow in scope, it's really the online permitting, and really the departments that aren't directly involved every day, more of them are more access just for data purposes, like myself, I'm really just being able to log in, see where the project is, is the fire marshal still inspecting, is planning and zoning, or is it wetlands, more from a, just a data viewing point, whereas building, planning and zoning, water, sewer, engineering, they'll be able to go into the plans, mark them up with Blue Beam, and not have to get your 16 copies and things like that. So it's, it's a very narrow scope, and the only thing it will accomplish, account reconciliation and integration with Munis and Vision, so this will play nice with the other systems already in place, but it's a very narrow focus.
I could expand upon that as well. So this would be for building permits, so all building permits could be done online. The fire marshal, he does inspections, this would be a solution to his current system, this would replace his current software. The health department as well, they go out, they issue permits, they do inspections, this would be for that as well, as well as planning and zoning, water and sewer to a lesser extent, and also wetlands, so those are the main departments that would use it.
So, so who is the system owner? Who is going to run the project? Where is the timeline, and who is responsible for the data sources, the access controls, all of the individual? I mean, I, I can't think that Mr. Winters would own this system, you know, and the data, it would be the framework in which it runs on, and to make sure it's secure and everything else. The question is, is we, we're entering into uncharted territory with the town, and having somebody who is, somebody who owns the data in the project plan? Is it expected to be the department heads to do that?
I believe, do you want to take some of that?
Yeah, so since there won't be any data migration, since everything's in paper right now, so we're kind of, we're getting to the point, timeline would be probably three to four months of implementation, soft launch, testing, and then live, probably five to six months. The departments have talked about when we do kind of, everybody's ready to go, we'll move from the, the paper process to the digital process, but right now, it would, it would take forever to scan in all the different projects over the years. So in, in one way, with us not being tech savvy in the past, data, we're starting with a clean slate.
Understatement of the year. Thank you.
On to Councilor Tata, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to, just because this is so new for us, I just want to make sure when people do, you know, start using these systems, that we, we are offering help to people who maybe need help with new online systems, it's going to be very new to everybody, so I know some other towns, you know, they insist that you do everything online, and there's really not a lot of help for people, so I hope we don't lose sight of that, but obviously, this is a positive step forward. One phrase in here that intrigued me is online payment. So is this going to be, this system has its own online payment, or will this go like directly to the comptroller? How are the online payments? Or, or if we end up with online payments for other departments, is this all going to merge, or this will be its own separate system for that?
It ties into a number of online payment companies, such as Point and Pay, or any of the big ones out there, so we could really choose who we wanted to use, and they would handle all the payment processing.
Oh, okay. So, so if other departments start accepting online payments, this is something that you can integrate for ease of the finance department, for example?
Yeah.
Wonderful. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. On to Councilor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the first question, I just want to understand, because I, I went through the, the backup, and I'm understanding with the pricing summary that we're getting one each of everything, and then on the next page, there's no associated costs with certain annual fees, for example, the SmartGov code enforcement, that's actually, so, so that looks like there's no annual fee, but we'll have that as an option, is that, that's correct? It's listed as one of the things that comes in the package?
Yeah, so the, the first pricing will be the implementation cost, roughly $37,000, and then on the, the following pages, we'll show you year one cost, $35,000, all the way up to year five, $40,000.
Okay, but, but, so everything there is included, even if there's no, it's, it's at a zero? I just, sometimes in a table, okay. So basically, what this thing would do was allow anybody from the outside to file a complaint regarding zoning or anything like that? I mean, is that basically what this is?
It allows also filing of complaints for every department, so it'll go into one system as it was explained, and also it allows, it's basically to allow for online permitting, so anybody wants to, say, file a building permit for a shed, they can file that right online.
Right, but like, let's say somebody's building a house next door to me, and they've gone through the town and everything's great, but I'm looking at it and it doesn't look right. This seems like this is an online portal that I could actually go in and say, by the way, at 123 Jones Street, this is such and such. Okay.
Yep, it'll track it, it'll create a complaint number, and it'll be able to be reviewed by each department.
That, that, I think that's, this is, this is pretty, this is pretty cool, sorry, for lack of a better word, I read through it. The, the one thing I want to piggyback on, Councilor Tata's point though, and I, and I think this is very important, considering the town we live in, and, and just in general, but that, that this does not replace somebody answering a phone, because oftentimes, what you end up getting, like, for example, if you have to file a, an unemployment claim with the state, let's say, you can't call anybody, you have to like schedule a call, and then they'll give you a callback time like two weeks later, or two hours later, or something like that, and it's very, so while we move to this very needed tool, I would hope that we're not going to lose sight of the fact that people still do need to call, and there should be somebody, even if it costs 16 bucks for someone to pick up, or six bucks to pick up a phone, 16, yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Fishbein?
So this is exciting, you know, from my perspective. Before the pandemic, one of the things that I fought for was to get our land records online, and, you know, the pandemic sort of forced us to do that, and, you know, just this weekend, I was using that system on Sunday, you know, and I, and I know others do. So, you know, this is helpful, this is helpful to us when we get the call on the weekend from the constituent who's complaining about the project around the corner from them that they want to know about, and, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to go into the system and, and look at it and learn about it instead of waiting for Monday, so that, that's a great thing. You know, I know the GIS system that we've had in this town has been only for commercial. As part of this, are we opening the GIS system up to residential as well?
Yes, so we do have data collected, and that data will be able to be integrated into the system, so you'll be able to see, you know, it's all, it's all, it's all about the available data that we have, we're kind of behind on that data, so, but we, I am building that database as we speak, SCROG is assisting with that, so hopefully, once that data is up and running, I know we'll at least have parcels, we'll have just generalized data available, but this will be able to integrate directly, and you'll be able to see where someone's pulling a building permit, where someone is pulling another permit or an administrative approval permit, any, any permit that gets filed in the system, you'll be able to see, I believe you'll be able to look at violations as well, so this will, this will hopefully, you know, help create a better, a more transparent environment at least.
Yeah, it appears, because I was in Meriden's system yesterday, I know their GIS is residential, it's hooked up with the assessors, but as far as complaints and that kind of stuff, that's not part of their system, so, you know, know that we're going a step further than one of our other towns, but this system, the real time, being able to access member of the public, not an applicant, i- is there another town that I can look at that has this system or something similar, just to familiarize myself with? Because if I'm an applicant, I'm going to more than likely have a username for my application, I'm going to have enhanced ability for that particular, you know, but as a member of the public, you know, you're not going to want to get those individuals, you know, modification, editing, all of that stuff.
And there is, there is part of it, so some of, some of the data will be staff-only view, so, but, but really, the big thing that, that we were focused on too is the transparency and accountability. Not everybody could make it to town hall by five o'clock, and then when you do get here, sometimes you're waiting at the counter, and then you have to pull the file, then you have to make copies, then you, you know, it, then someone's going through the files, what happens if some of that paperwork disappears? Kevin's had it where someone wrote on the originals, you know, so things like that, so data integrity for the town, this is, this is just something that we just felt it was, it was needed, but you're 100% correct with, you know, that accountability and that transparency, for people to be able to really see what is going on in town, and, you know, where it is, and maybe they didn't pull a permit. There is a mobile app as well, where zoning enforcement, building, they'll be able to go out, spot, you know, look right at a, a building, blight, different things, using the mobile app, and it will all tie in together, but, you know, really, it's, it brings that transparency and accountability.
So do we know another town that, I'm not challenging?
Yeah, no, we could, we could get you some of the ones that use SmartGov, there are, there are some towns in Connecticut that use the other, one of the other platforms we looked at, they have, I know Maricopa County in Arizona, we can, we can definitely get you a list of some different ones.
I'd like to see this one, I'm not going to-
Yeah, not the other ones.
I'm not going to second guess the choice that you guys have made, okay, so, but I'd like to familiarize myself. I would think also that this would be a less cost for applicants, because right now, having to submit 16 copies of an application can be costly. The other thing is that up until recently, and this may still be the case, you go to the planning and zoning department, and you want a copy of a subdivision map, like, the only machine in the building that would copy that is in the engineering office.
Correct.
Yeah, so you'd have to bring it up there to do that, which, you know, now you're, you're letting an original map out of planning and zoning, you're trusting it gets upstairs, you know, thankfully, I've been trusted in the past, but I can understand that. And then the last thing is the communication on, you know, I'm not so much concerned about the complaint aspect, because, you know, I will tell you, I had a complaint on Sorento the last year, you know, I went to the building department, Kevin did a great job, you know, and was very timely on it, but communication back to the complaining individual, is this going to allow for more than just submission, but an update, you know, I went out there, I, you know, that kind of stuff? Is, is that going to be part of the system?
Yes, there'll be, someone will check the complaint, they'll respond to the complaint, they'll either close the complaint, keep the complaint open, so they'll be able to view the complaint in real time as it's filed, so, yeah, you'll be able to see that.
It's one of the, it's one of my favorite things that I've heard about up here in a while, so, anyway, but thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Members of the public on this topic? All right, back to the council. Madam Clerk, we kindly call the roll.
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Moron?
Yes, motion unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion on number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the appropriation and force of $600,000 for a vacuum truck for Public Works.
Second? All right, motion is made and seconded. Good evening, Mr. Balchamitis.
Good evening.
Did you want to start with anything, or would you like to just take questions?
I don't mind giving a, some brief comments if, if that's all right.
Please.
Okay, so I am here asking for your authorization to continue money over, so this is $600,000 for a replacement vac truck for the Department of Public Works, which we use to clean catch basins and storm sewers. It was a new capital item that I had put into during budget prep, into the '24, '25 fiscal year request. It was not on the mayor's budget that came before the council. This item was funded in April just of this year, and I, and I believe what the source was, is there was some additional revenue that the town took in from some communication taxes that had been estimated, it came in much higher, and money was available, and this council did approve the $600,000 for the purchase of, of that item. So unfortunately, without having a whole year, only having a couple months, it's short, it's short time to write a detailed specification for a technical piece of equipment like this, to have it reviewed by purchasing, advertise, and publicly go out and award a project, so that is the reason I'm asking you to consider just carrying that money over into the next fiscal year, so we have the time to go through the procurement process. I mentioned this is a replacement of a piece of equipment that we have, the equipment that we have is 24 years old, obviously, it's aged, parts are harder and harder to find, as an example, the cabin chassis of that equipment is, it's the brand name, and I got to look at it, it's Sterling, and I got to look at it because it's no longer in business, you know, and, and we find ourselves in situations sometimes where you have to fabricate a part because it's no longer available, so it, but the biggest, the biggest thing here is the machine is functional, I will, I will tell you that, it is functional. It can go out, and it can service this town when we need to be reactive to a problem, the onesies, twosies. The problem that we have is we need to ramp up the catch basin maintenance program in this town, and it's not just because we want to, it's not because we want to start taking maintenance of that and other items from a reactive to a proactive sense, we have to because of a permit called MS4s, which is municipal small storm sewer systems that is mandated by US EPA, and we issued a permit here in this municipality from DEP, they oversee it and they enforce it, and there's a lot of components to that, that permit, I won't get into all of it, but one of the, the things that we're going to have to do as an urbanized community is clean and start to monitor all of our catch basins. I've been working with engineering to help develop a, a catch basin cleaning monitoring program, we have over 9,000 catch basins in this town. The way I see this, probably over the next five years, is we're going to be cleaning probably half of those, 5,000 over the, the next five years. We need new reliable equipment to do that, and that's just all part of, of just staying in compliance with the, the MS4 permit. I could tell you, so I've now been in Public Works for five years, so even before that time, back in the 2016, '27 timeframe, when I was town engineer, I was working with the then mayor, with the then Public Works Director, and Janice can absolutely tell you, we as a municipality, when, when DEP was drafting that MS4 permit, we were petrified at what it was going to cost the town. At one point, we're thinking we would need two vac trucks just to keep up with the demand. I don't think we're going to be at that point, but I think we're at a point where we need new reliable equipment to ramp up that program and do what we have to do to be in compliance, so that is my spiel.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the council? Mr. Fishbein? Rob?
It's only been five years? It feels like 20, anyway.
30.
Okay. How many of these things do we have in town, like all told?
So Public Works has one, like I said, it's, it's functional, I think this is a good opportunity because it is functional, there's some trade-in value, I do understand that the sewer division, I see Mr. Amway is, is here, so when I misspeak, he can correct me, I believe they have two.
Okay, and have we looked into, like, working together, I mean, I don't know how much these things are used, based on what you said, they may get used more, but it seems to me $600,000 is a lot of money if we're not using it that often, I don't know how often you do use it, or what's planned.
Okay, so a- as far as the time we're using it, it's, it's relatively infrequent, because again, you know, we're, we're doing the onesie, twosies, and, and we're, you know, reacting to a maintenance problem as, as it comes up. We've got to get to the point where we're proactive, and that truck is out running two, three days a week to do 20 catch basins a week, because that would be, how are you going to get to 5,000 over the, the next five, six years? the, the next five, six years? It, it needs to be ramped up significantly. Um, a- as far as why, and did you ask me if they could, if, like, if we could combine that, that effort?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the trucks are obviously similar, you, you look at them, uh, just standing side by side, they're gonna be similar. Um, a, a truck that is set up for catch basins is going to be slightly different mechanically, um, i- it's gonna have a sediment trap inside, the boom is going to be different, it's going to be stronger for lis- lifting catch basin grates, um, it's a, it, it, it's a slightly different animal. Um, I, I think the bigger issue is, and we won't get too graphic, we're collecting two different products, and we can't mix those contents i- in the can. Um, so, it, you know, you can imagine if we clean out a catch basin, uh, and it's a shared truck, now we're bringing our stuff to the treatment plant and dumping it. The sewer division is, that, that, that's gonna be the last thing they want, is to take our waste as, um, as sanitary waste and process it through their, through their plant. Uh, I just don't see the feasibility in, in sharing a vehicle.
Where do you bring the waste now?
It's a great question, so, um, we let the waste decant off, we let the water drain out of it because we're paying ultimately for the disposal of it by ton. Um, right now that goes up to the landfill in Manchester, um, as they're capping a landfill, and, um, it's, it's not cheap, it's a hundred dollars per ton to dispose of it. Um, there's, there's very, there's some uses for catch basin and street sweeping cleaning, um, you know, for that, for that debris, there are some uses for it that are permitted by DEP. Um, I could tell you this town has tried some in the past, such as backfilling new curbing that we've done.
Breaks down.
Honestly, this stuff is disgusting, you wouldn't want it in front of your house. Um, a, a long time ago we learned that we're gonna dispose of it properly.
All right, I don't know where, I mean, I, I really don't know where I am on this one, so.
Well, you're certainly not as excited as the last item.
No, I am certainly not. It's a lot of money, and, you know, and I haven't heard that working with our other major division in the town is undoable, um, you know, we could do a lot with $600,000, so I appreciate you being here, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, I have another question, but the, what you'd mentioned earlier, do you anticipate that this is gonna require a lot of extra time for, to perform this that we're not doing right now, so over the next few years, I mean, is this gonna be, are we staffed to do this, or are we?
It's going to take more staff, I mean, like I mentioned, I, I see, you know, when, when we're ramped up in, um, in, in doing this program, the way we need to be doing it, it's gonna be two, three days a week, and it's, it's gonna be a two-man crew, and it's something that is presently not happening.
Okay, and then I guess this, this is just a general question, I had a question, and actually I was gonna ask the comptroller, when we approved this initially, this was from the general fund, correct?
This was, um, Mr. Chairman, this was, uh, communications tax revenue paid to us, collected by the state and paid to us.
Right, but that, doesn't that just go into the general fund, more or less?
Um, if it, if it's not otherwise allocated, it would. Um, we had, in, in this past year, we had collected or received more from the state than we had budgeted to collect, so because we had excess funds, um, we thought this was a good way to purchase this truck without putting into, it into next year's budget.
Okay, so I, thank you for clarifying, because I was initially, it was initially sort of described as like this money from the tax, which we get, but if we didn't spend it, it would otherwise go into the general fund, correct?
Correct.
So, so we kinda did spend money from, even though we, I, I'm just saying, is it, are we allocating money for an expense from a pot of money, which we had something drop money into it, but now we're saying, well, but we're gonna hold that money, and we're gonna pay for the stuff with it, which is fine, I'm not, but I'm just, so, I just wanna clarify, that this, this wasn't, this isn't a separate account, this is money if we didn't spend it on this, would go into our piggy bank, and we would have it for other purposes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's it.
So, and, you know, um, to add a little clarity to your point, you know, the, every year in the budget, there's, I think, somewhere in the magnitude of seven and a half million dollars this year that we took from the general fund to balance the budget, and then a lot of that ends up going back at the end of the year, et cetera, et cetera, so I think that's, you know, and if you, sort of the budgeting practice that was started the last administration, you know, I'm not sure if that will continue, or, we'll wait and see. Uh, moving on to Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, Rob. A couple of questions regarding the procurement process of the net new one, specifically regarding trade-in value that you mentioned before. You know, i- i- is there an idea of what the trade-in value would be, will that be absolutely part of the process? Would it be, and second part of the question is, would that, would the truck then be offered to other departments, even Board of Ed, for, for use on their properties if not, uh, if not water and sewer, or do we look to get, um, some type of value from that?
You're right, you had a couple of questions in there, so I'll try to answer them, them, them all. Um, so it does have a trade-in value, and because we'd be purchasing the new one from a distributor specializes in equipment, it, it's gonna be worth more of them. They, they'll probably take it, refurbish it, sell it to a, a contractor, if you will. As far as the value, I, I'm not sure, I, I don't wanna guess at what the trade-in value would be. Um, I could tell you, I was contacted by Mark Deptula for Board of Ed, um, to ask if we could do some cleaning for him, um, in which we said yes, so we're, we're always willing to, you know, share and work with other departments.
Thank you. Um, second question regarding, um, the number of hours on the existing truck and, and what that utilization has been, I understand that it was rebuilt a little bit over ten years ago or, or so now, um, you know, and, so.
So, um, just so we're talking about the same piece of equipment, the, the one at Public Works is twenty-four years old, it has not gone through a refurbishing. Um, I believe the one that's gone through a refurbishing back in twenty twelve is the nineteen ninety-three vac truck for the sewer division.
Understood, okay. Um, are we currently in MS four compliance?
I, I mean, I, I believe so, we file a report every year, um, I, I just think, you know, we're at a point where we have to ramp up that, um, put it this way, and, and I've tried to get a direct answer from DEP and from our, uh, environmental consultant, um, Atlas out of East Hartford that assists us with several general permits, including the MS four permit. Um, I've tried to ask a, a black and white question, how many basins should we have cleaned by each year? Um, and there, there really is no exact answer, but what I am confident in is by the, the permit's about to be renewed, I believe it expires July one of, of this year, uh, we, we automatically get registered for the next five-year permit. I believe by the end of that five years, we're going to have to have cleaned all of our catch basins within our urbanized area, so, and our forty square miles, believe it or not, a lot, even though we've got, you know, um, a, a, a lot of, um, farm country out there, by definition, through DEP or the, the EPA standard for this permit, we have a lot of urbanized areas, a- and that's why I'm saying of, of our nine thousand catch basins, um, I'm expecting five or six thousand are going to be, you know, fall within that urbanized area for compliance.
Thank you. What's the general availability of a vac truck on the market? Is it, is it months, is it years, like in, in fire apparatus, is, is there?
It's, it's not years, but it, but it certainly can be months, depending if you have, um, you know, certain requirements, um, that, that you would add to it, and off-the-shelf unit. Um, do some of these suppliers have something ready to go? They do, they do. Something may have to be modified slightly to, to fit a client's needs.
So I'm often not in a position where I enjoy kicking the can, um, if we have the, if we have the funds available, if we go through the process, if it's the right fit to, to do it now. It, it just, in this case, it seems you were quoted in today's paper regarding, uh, paving of roads and the major projects that are starting, and how our dollars don't stretch as thin as they once did. Um, hopefully that was an accurate representation.
Sounds about right, and, and in ten years paving's gone up fifty percent for what we pay per ton in, in place, we're, we're paving less road for that same dollar.
So I, I just, I, I, I have to wonder, and, and I guess I'll, I'll wonder with my, my vote, you know, does it make sense to do this now, or does it make sense to do it next year or the year after, um, you know, and, and, and do we kick the can at that point? That's, those are the questions that I-
Well, I'm hoping your vote is to not kick the can, I mean, I, I can't think of any purchase of service that the town has deferred and not regretted it, because it's cost more later.
Good point, good point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Rob.
Good evening.
Hey, have we considered, uh, or has it been considered if it would be more efficient to contract this type of workout?
Um, I did look at that, and, uh, it's, it's actually, it, it's very expensive. Um, so, you know, I kinda run a scenario where, uh, I, I'd made some estimates, as for how many catch basins we could clean in a day with a, a two-man Public Works crew, what we pay, um, you know, um, per, per hour, um, hauling costs, the disposal costs at a hundred dollars a ton up in, up in, um, uh, Manchester, and, you know, so, for five thousand catch basins, um, our total cost for, including the vac truck, at $600,000 is about 1.1 million dollars, so again, that, that includes, um, fuel consumption for this equipment. It's the purchase of the equipment, it's DPW's later, labor, it's DPW hauling. Um, if we were to contract out, uh, and I have had conversations with, um, with those contractors, the biggest one in the area is McVac, um, and I, I've asked them recently, I said, if, if I brought you in to do a couple hundred, a couple thousand basins, what's the cost per basin? Um, I was shocked, I, I thought it might be in the, in the two hundred dollar range. Um, it's three hundred and fifty to three hundred and seventy-five dollars per catch basin, so you could quickly see how at five thousand basins, even at three hundred, that's a million and a half dollars. We're, we're already at a savings by having this equipment and, and doing it with our forces. Um, you know, the counter side is, to Counselor Reynolds' point, it, it's a service that we're not doing right now, it's, it's taking two guys, two or three days a week, um, two of our, our laborers to get that done, um, but again, that, that labor cost was, was built into my analysis, so thank you for that question.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Testa?
Thank you, good evening, Rob.
Good evening.
Um, I, I, I think back to when we used to sand the roads. I remember growing up, we always saw the street sweepers coming by, we saw the vac trucks come by, cause we were loading sand into the catch basins on a regular basis, and where I live, there are several on my str- on, along my property, um, but also we have that retention basin in the back where water drains from the roads into it, and, um, as you all know, you can see the effects of having, uh, years of sand flowing through there and not being removed, and those, they're almost clogged totally. Um, but we don't sand anymore. Um, so, I'm looking at this project as compared to in the past, a one-time thing, relatively speaking. Once you clean these out, um, it's gonna take an awful long time for you have to do it again. Would, would you agree with that?
I, I would hope that's the case, but I could tell you there's locations that get sediment and, um, and, and loading of, uh, woody vegetation, leaf debris, et cetera, so, um, y- you'd be amazed. So we, we sweep, we sweep every road in this town once a year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll get calls two weeks after, be like, hey, you forgot my road this year, and, and we track it, and we'll tell people, no, we, we were there, we were there two weeks ago, three weeks ago. The roadside, the gutters are already a mess, and, and, you know, maybe it's the, it's the sediment coming off in, in the, in the storm runoff, um, you know, maybe it's, it's the vegetation, um, but I think you'd still be surprised at how much gets into a storm sewer, you know, into a catch basin, and accumulates in that, what we call the sump.
I mean, I was gonna say, what's down there, you know, and, you know, other than-
But you're right, thankfully, thankfully, we don't, thankfully, we don't sand anymore because it would, yeah, we, we would already be doing this.
Leaves, vegetation, we say, leaves, dirt, and of course, the runoff from vehicles makes this stuff regulated and you can't use it for other things.
And trash.
Yeah, yeah. Um, which kinda leads me to my point, though, um, it's, it's very possible that when you've gone through this process and you'd catch up, um, you may then be on a much slower schedule of maintaining down the road, um, because we're not sanding, they're not filling with sand as they did twenty, thirty years ago. Is, have you looked, did you look into the option of leasing a vehicle? Is that even an option? Are there companies that lease these? I'm just looking at the cost, and-
Yeah, um, so, I, I didn't look at a leasing option, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if, um, if the vendors would, would do that, I, I suppose if it financially made sense for them, they're gonna, um, you know, perhaps they would. Um, I think the advantage here is, you know, with a purchase, we have a, a new or reliable machine to get us through this big push of this MS four permit, um, and then by the time that machine, you know, starts to get aged and, and require maintenance, yes, hopefully we're on a schedule now where through that catch basin monitoring program, we're just going back to the locations that have those, that, for, for whatever those reasons are, frequently fill up the quickest, cause we're still gonna have the obligation to, to clean them, but, you know, six and ten years from now, um, you know, we'll have a six, ten-year-old machine that's still reliable, um, and, and conserve that function to clean those basins or respond to, you know, the, the emergency backups.
Uh, my other point, I, I guess, I'm just, I'm skeptical about trading in the old one, uh, especially if you're only gonna get a pittance for it. I mean, if you trade that in and, you know, you're getting twenty thousand dollars, I mean, don't do it.
We, we always have the option, so when we put a bid out and there's a trade value, um, you, you always have the option to pull that back, it's, it's, it's a, it's essentially a, an, an add alternate, like, give us a price for, you know, this machine if we trade it, and you could always decide not to.
I mean, I would just, you know, we'd spend a lot of money on this one, uh, but you still have one that you admit still works, and if it's gonna take twenty, thirty, forty grand off a $600,000 purchase, I'd rather you have that going out and getting this job done quicker, um, even if it doesn't do work as quickly or as well, uh, but that's just a, that's just a, a thought.
No, it's something we could evaluate, you know, at a time of bid.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
On to Mr. Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the second time. Um, Rob, I'm still trying to convince myself here.
Oh, my.
In addition to the, um, the machinery, based upon prior questions and answers, you're gonna have to put on more staff to do this also, right?
We, we always need more staff, I mean, we're, we're, you know, we, we still have, um, three or four vacancies, um, that seems to be the, the case, so.
When we're looking at the number here, it's more than 600,000 because you would not be putting on this additional staff, let's say if you outsourced it, right, cause they'd be using their staff. So how many people do you think you'd be putting on extra for this project?
Well, like I, like I mentioned, this would be a, a two-person crew, two or three days a week.
And then, once the project is done, which, you know, the exchange a little while ago, you go through all of them, you're gonna hope that you don't have to do the whole thing, it's not forever rotating, always doing this.
As intensely, right, right.
I guess the concern is that we end up with employees that we don't need at that point, and we always get complaints about that. Um, I guess on the other hand, if, I think you said the unit, the newest unit from the Public Works Division is nineteen ninety-three, I think you said?
So we have one unit at Public Works, it's twenty-four years old.
No, that, um, public, not-
Yeah, the, the sewer division.
Sewer division.
It's a nineteen ninety-three unit.
So I guess if you had a new unit and theirs started to have the same situation, then we could partner and you guys could be helping them out, so I guess that's another way of looking.
Well, I'd still have that concern, and, and I think Mr. Amway would too.
Yeah, I know, with the materials, but certainly, I don't know if the industry allows for some sort of cleaning or something like that. Still trying to convince myself, so anyway, that's all I had.
I'm trying to help you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Laffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with the new truck, you said you, you thought it would take, you know, like, two or three days a week, it would be out, it, does that give time, like- Does that give time, like if the Board of Ed said, "I need, we need something cleaned up"? Like, I don't know what their use level is, like, would you, or you know, you're going to be so tight on staffing that you're not going to have a guy... Because he's going to be scheduled two to three days on this truck for your projects. You're not going to be able to break away and go over to the Board of Ed and help out.
I think that we would, the same way we would now with our staffing level. It's, you know, we'd always offer that in-kind service. So, you know, I'm just saying, I think on an average, being ramped up, this is two or three days a week that that truck is out, you know, for eight hours with a two-man crew.
Because I want you to keep moving forward. I'm concerned, as it's been brought up with the whole trade-in value thing, I'd hate to find out we traded it in for 25,000 and they turned around and sold it for 200 or something. After dropping, you know, 30 or 40,000 into it, when we could either keep it on backup or Board of Ed could use it, or maybe it dumps over in the water because then it can stay there and not have to come back. That's my only concern. And are you saying that that's an administrative decision you can make? You'll have the 600,000 and if the trade-in value is very low, you can work it out with the mayor or decide not to?
I think we could do that.
Okay.
I think we could do that. But you just mentioned, you know, putting money into this DPW machine. So again, the DPW machine that's 24 years old has never had an overhaul or renovation. You know, it certainly had repairs and, you know, I could tell you a lot of those working components are super expensive, so...
And maybe that's not something that comes out of your budget, but if there's another department or part of the town that wanted it, they would consider it at that time. Not that we could never just sell it again for close to the trade-in value. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you know the question from the council members of the public? Mr. Carmerford?
Bill Carmerford, Broadview Drive. I brought the information last time about the water and sewer truck that they totally refurbished but only has 20 hours on it. Can that truck do the same job? Rob?
Not in its current configuration. And I also, I mean, so I've...
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thought I was talking into the microphone well, so my apologies. So you'll forgive me if I don't turn and look at you when I give a response. So, not for free. So in other words, if we got that truck right now, that 1993 that's been refurbished, number one, there'd probably be a cost to this side of the town government from the utilities to actually take that truck. Secondly, it's going to need modifications to be a catch basin truck. What the extent of those costs are, not exactly sure. But Neil knows that truck, I think, inside and out. And I will, you know, without me criticizing his equipment, maybe he wants to criticize his own.
Good evening, Mr. Amwick.
Thank you. For the record, Neil Amwick, General Manager for the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions. So there was a question previously, new microphones. So why is the 1993 vacuum truck not set up to clean catch basins? Excuse, I apologize. So there, as Rob mentioned, there are, there is no internal debris catcher upstream of the can. So overall, the two vehicles look similar, but component-wise, there's different. There's no pick points on the boom of the 1993 sewer division vac truck for lifting and lowering catch basin grates. The boom would need to be strengthened for the weight of the catch basin weights, or you would need to replace the boom with a heavier boom. That's going to be important in a minute. And a catch basin vacuum truck traditionally has better reach than the boom on a sewer division or on a wastewater truck. So several town councils ago, the town council did receive a breakdown of the hours. The sewer division has two vacuum trucks. The older one is a 1993. It was refurbished in 2012 at a cost of 1,29750. The newer vac truck that the sewer division has is 2002. So put that into perspective, the newer vac truck that the Wallingford Sewer Division has is 22 years old. So let's go back to the 1993 vac truck. And on the piece of document that was passed to the town council, at the very top, you will notice it has a single front axle and a single rear axle. That vehicle has a placard pound limit of 39,000 pounds. The gross vehicle weight, and we did measure it at the Wallingford scale, is 36,950 pounds. So that leaves 2,050 pounds available for wastewater or debris. Water weighs 8.34 pounds per gallon. Dividing that into 2,050 pounds, that gives us a capacity of 2,45.8 gallons before we were over the legal load road limit. Sewer division has 12 wastewater pump stations throughout town. The 245.8 gallon capacity, we could not empty any of those wet wells. We simply do not have the capacity unless we would violate the roadway limits. So let's, Rob and I spoke, catch basin sump is three feet, front to back, four feet wide. For discussion purposes, let's say we have one foot of debris in it, the debris is wet, density of 70 pounds per cubic foot, that's 840 pounds per catch basin that Public Works would be lifting out at a capacity of 2,050 pounds. You could empty 2.44 catch basins before you were at the load limit. Not very feasible. And again, if the sewer division were to sell, we don't gift, we would sell to the Public Works. They would then have to pay that price and then there would be some upgrades. Those upgrades, particularly a heavier boom, would then reduce that available capacity before you were at the placard limit for that 1993 vac truck. Sewer division has two vac trucks. The reason is, is we basically run the 2002 several times a week. That is our fire truck, that is our go-to. Besides vacuuming out wet wells at pump stations, we also use it to flush sanitary sewer mains. So when there is a blockage at 2:00 in the morning because somebody has called system operations, they then call one of our collection staff. We're really not in a position to say, "Wait, let's call somebody at Public Works, get the key, drive over there, has it been cleaned out?" The sewer division has a duty and a responsibility to roll and to meet the needs of the ratepayers. But let's take a look. Oh, by the way, I did mention that we flush sanitary sewer mains. You know, suppose there's just debris, it's amazing what people throw in or flush down their wastewater treatment systems. At a capacity of 245 gallons, that would provide us with about 8.17 minutes of flushing at 30 gallons per minute to flush. We couldn't even do one length of sanitary sewer. Let's take a look at the refurbishment price of 1,29750. That bid was opened on September 12, 2012. So it does take a while for it to refurbish, but for discussion purposes, let's say it was back and ready on October 1, 2012 to October 1, 2024. So that is when we are turning it in and we are trading it in because quite frankly, the value to the Wallingford Sewer Division at this point is minimal. That's 12 years. So take the 1,29750 divided by 12 years, that's $10,812.50 per year. We have approximately 12,747 customers. That's $0.2121 per quarter, per customer in order to have the safety, security, and insurance. That if the 2002 sewer division vac truck was down, was in maintenance, we could still respond to an emergency situation. Now, the 1,29750 was an operating fund. So we pay for our operating funds out of our consumption charge, our dollars per CCF. Going from second quarter, 2012, 2013, to first quarter, 2023, 24, and those are inclusive, the sewer division sold through consumption 11,408,949,840 gallons. We have records of that. Dividing that into the 1,29750, that was 0.0114 per 100 cubic feet. The median customer in Wallingford uses 1,200 cubic feet or 12 CCF per quarter. So for the past 12 years, it's cost them 12 cents a quarter or 48 cents a year to have that assurance, to have that insurance that if there was a backup, the sewer division could respond. Going back to the original question, with a capacity of 2,050 pounds before we meet the placard limit, it is not really reasonable to sell and/or gift to the Public Works Department for their need. Did that answer the question? With that, I'll be happy to answer any of the questions as well.
If you're asking me, the answer is no. I only ask yes or no. Can that truck be used? And as far as the numbers go, the quick number of 2,000, that's just under a ton, okay? Keep that in mind, because I've got some more paperwork for you guys. That's a ton, 2,500 pounds a ton, or 2,200. So, Mr. Bolzremitis, right now, does the existing truck have a winch system to lift the grate up?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I just said I don't know.
So how was the grate lifted up?
Well, it's either with a winch system or it connects to the front snorkel, the boom.
So theoretically, the truck might not have a winch system in the front then? The one that you use today, theoretically, it might not have one?
Again, I don't know, and I don't use it.
Well, the gentleman just stated that it doesn't have a winch system. We have to have a winch system in order for it to happen. But if the existing truck doesn't have one, it's the same truck. 2,000 pounds, okay? Keep that in mind. And as far as the inspections go, can you just kind of give us a quick idea how the inspection actually takes place? A catch basin inspection?
So it depends what we're inspecting for. We inspect a lot of our catch basins for roads that we're paving. So, you know, we go and we will check the sump for the contents that's accumulated. But we'll also look at the structure, especially the top portions, because they usually will decay or break down first because we want to replace those before we pave a road. So we do hundreds of those a year.
So hypothetically, the two guys that go out there today that are going to go do inspection, are those the people that do the inspection? Or does somebody else drive around, do an inspection, come back with the list and say, "These are the ones that I found that need to be cleaned," and/or is it those two people that do the inspection?
It's usually one of the supervisors or myself, you know, as part of a pre-survey for a road that's going to be paved.
Okay, so I'm, again, I'm kind of confused because when you inspect it, is there a probe that you put down into the catch basin? Because you're clearly, unless you're lifting the grate off, how is it done?
No, there's no probe.
So it's a visual?
It's a visual inspection.
And when, what's the percentage of capacity in that catch basin that's, that it's supposed to be at in order to vacuum it out?
Wait, Mr. Carmerford, I'm not sure how this relates to the purchase of the vac truck, though.
Because I think that we all need to understand how the process works, number one. Because we're hearing, "Well, it needs a winch." Well, if it needs a winch, how, why does it need a winch? Because we don't know what the, at least I don't know. How is that catch basin inspected? Does somebody have a 20-foot probe and once they hit sediment? And then they say, "Okay, this is one that has to happen," so somebody just drives by? Because Mr. Bolzremitis says he plans on doing 5,000 in the next, in the next five years. So I would like to know, I would imagine you guys would like to know too, what the process is in order to say, "Hey, this one needs to get done."
Well, I could tell you, so by way of example, the catch basin outside of my house is full of debris and stuff and it's coming over the top, so I don't need a probe to know that it's full, right? So I think a visual inspection, for a man of his caliber, I think, could do a pretty effective visual inspection to determine which catch basins need to be emptied.
Well, that's not the case because a catch basin is down at the bottom where the sediment is. It's below your pipe.
Your point being?
Okay. So last time I gave you guys some information as far as the $130,000, because in my opinion, I think that truck could still be utilized here, okay? And as far as the MS-4, I don't even know if anybody up there even knows what an MS-4 is. So they're giving you numbers, they're throwing all different things. I like to deal with facts, just facts. Not my opinion, but I'll give you my opinion at the end, but I'm going to present you the facts as far as the MS-4 because I was hopeful, because it got canceled before, as to what the MS-4 means and what has happened in the history since 2017 about what has taken place with the MS-4 that Mr. Bolzremitis is referring to, okay? So I'll give you a quick handout, it'll take two minutes for you to follow along with me.
Mr. Carmerford, do you have one for Mr. Bolzremitis?
I don't. This is his paperwork. If you want to give him one of yours, the mayor can give his.
It would seem appropriate for him to know, yeah, know what you're handing out.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So right now, do we, we have an expired MS-4, is that correct?
I believe everybody's MS-4 is expiring at the end of the month and is automatically renewed July 1st.
Okay, because if you guys look at my, I think, believe it's my second piece of paper, it says, "This general permit expired in 2015, was extended to January 2016, then to 2017, revised MS-4 general permit was issued July 17th and expired on June 22nd." A revised MS-4 permit has not been issued. We don't have one. That was, I believe, the second page. Now, the next page is the year ending December 2023. At the time of this report, the Town of Wallingford has not provided this information. So we have no idea, based upon what they submitted, how many were inspected, how many were cleaned. And this is a requirement. So we have no idea in 2023. Now we're going to go to 2022, it says, this is on their MS-4 reports that are online on the town's website. 2022, catch basins inspected as needed basis. Catch basins cleaned, 30, 30, 30, at 12 tons. Now we're going to jump to 2020 because 2021 was COVID. Now, if you look at that piece of paper, it says, "Curb miles swept, volume materials collected, 409 tons. Catch basins inspected, 1,000-plus per year." Pretty impressive. Catch basins cleaned, 100, just 100 cleaned and 150 tons done. Now, the interesting thing is, this isn't my paperwork, this is theirs. You go to 2019, it's the exact same numbers, exact. How is that possible, you would think? I mean, we all go to the casino, these are pretty good odds. We look at it, it was curb miles swept 231 in 2020, volume 409 tons. You go to 2019, it's exactly the same. Well, it's coincidence. So now we're going to go to 2018 and it happens again.
Mr. Carmerford?
Pardon me?
I understand the point you're making. You're running long. Can you wrap it up?
Well, I took the time, so I think that I should be able to at least explain to you what these, what this says. I have to think, number one, how is it possible, 2020, 2019, those... 2020, 2019, those numbers are identical. So then we go back the next two years, they're identical again. Different numbers, but identical. I have a hard time as a taxpayer trying to believe that these are either coincidence, or the numbers aren't accurate. Probably the second, they're not accurate. So they're telling you, they're going to do 5,000 of them, they're only doing 30. So we're going to spend $600,000. There's a chance that the truck that the Water and Sewer has could potentially be used. And at the same time, if we're only doing 30, why wouldn't it be paying the subcontractor? Even at $400 a pop, which I have a hard time believing that one too, that's only 12 grand. We don't have to pay for employees, we don't have to pay for insurance, healthcare, we don't have to pay for maintenance on this thing, and so forth. Now, the interesting thing is, now I'll have to FY this. I'm hopeful that you guys would, but apparently I'm going to have to. On their actual permit, page 25, you guys don't have this, I do, but you guys can look it up. It says, "The Town Department of Public Works continues to have a catch basin cleaning and inspection plan. In this plan, the catch basins for inspection and cleaning are first to be concentrated in the urbanized area. Any catch basin found to be greater than 50% full of sediment is scheduled to be cleaned. Records are kept and will continue to be kept of the inspections and cleaning frequency. The following information: date, streets inspected, address of catch basins to be cleaned, and personnel assigned for the cleaning." I would pump the brakes on this. I would ask the Director of Public Works to get all those from 2017 to 2020, find out how many man-hours were on there, and find out where the material was, because there's a chain of custody. As far as the material goes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bolzremitis, the material goes to an area over near, I think, Water and Sewer or thereabouts. It gets dumped out and it dries. Is that correct, Mr. Bolzremitis?
It does. It gets dumped out so we can decant, so we get the water out of it, so we're not paying to dispose of water.
Right, so the contractor could do the same thing. The contractor, as the subcontractor, could go out there, suck up the 30 catch basins, dump it in the same spot. Public Works then can haul it up to Manchester. It doesn't make sense to get this thing. And especially with the information that you got. If I have to ask for this information for the MS-4, because I'd like to see how these numbers are going to mesh. I personally don't think they're going to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Moving back to the council, any other questions from the council? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Jeez. That's where I pass. No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. You okay over there?
All right, on to number 11.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Onto number 11, which is discussion, possible action regarding a fire department study. So at the last council meeting, we had discussed the potential of doing a study, and the mayor had offered to set up a meeting between myself, the mayor, and former Fire Chief Peter Struble. So that meeting took place. We had discussed a couple of options in regard to a review of the department. You could do sort of a broad-based study, you know, at expense, with a certain expense outside of the town. He had suggested that the Connecticut Career Fire Chiefs Association will do sort of a peer review of the department. So I had asked him for some additional information on that. So that was his recommendation, based on, instead of doing a study with, where they would come and gather data, it would be at one meeting involving several fire chiefs from the region, where they would ask questions of the department heads and come up with recommendations. Now, I guess this has taken place in several other fire districts where they've had, you know, issues or concerns, where they wanted to sort of have a review of the department. He put me in touch with Chief Januzewski of North Haven, who's the president of that association. So I spoke to him, he indicated that it could be done at no cost to the town, except for the cost of, say, a lunch or breakfast. He had fire chiefs in mind, it wouldn't be him because of his proximity to Wallingford. But he had other chiefs in mind that would potentially have experience with both EMS and fire. So I guess my motion is to move forward with that process with the Career Fire Chiefs Association and have them conduct their review. So what Chief Januzewski had requested was a narrowing of the questions that we would want them to focus on, you know, and then obviously dates. So this could be done in relatively short turnaround time, you know, certainly once we have the questions together and so on. So that's my motion, is that we move forward with that process.
Second.
Our motion's made and seconded. Chief Wilson, did you have anything you'd like to start with?
Yes, I'd like to, if that's good.
Kindly.
Deputy Chief Wilson, Wallingford Fire Department.
Deputy Chief Mike Strong.
So thank you for allowing me to speak, Chairman. Good evening, councilors. I'm just going to take a moment of your time to provide some insight this evening before, I guess, discussion maybe has started or any action on a review for the Wallingford Fire Department happens. For the past several years, the idea of having a study or review of the department, the department's budget and its staffing model has been debated in this council chamber and in small focus groups with the fire administration. As your fire administrators, it seems that we have been unable to provide the entire council with the confidence needed in the direction of the Wallingford Fire Department. And that's despite statistical analysis, analytical data highlighting department successes, being recognized by the state of Connecticut in 2021 as the leading EMS agency of the year. We were the best. And our peers in the fire service community have been reaching out to us, wondering how we got this service up and how they can do the same thing. We've also provided detailed cost of service analysis as compared to other departments providing like services that demonstrate how our department provides more service at or below other departments' costs per capita, less than other departments' per capita. Late last week, I learned that it will be suggested that the chief officers may be subject to a peer review from the Connecticut Career Fire Chiefs. For the members of the council who are unaware, this type of review typically happens when there's either a vote of no confidence from the labor union or the town believes its fire administrators are incompetent in their duties. For any researcher, the first step is to identify the problem. If the council believes they have now identified the problem, then this action for a peer review would be appropriate. If the peer review does not yield the results the council is looking for, my question tonight would be, what now? And where do we go from here? This review will not yield any report, will require stakeholders to be present for discussion, and will view all the quantitative analysis we have already presented that led us here tonight. I do not believe this outcome, that a department-wide study or review would produce any solutions and only lead to more uncertainty. So now, if you oblige me, I have a little anecdote. As the acting emergency manager, I started looking at the upcoming hurricane season in New England. For the past several weeks, I've read about superstorms and hurricane categories, but something stood out to me. It was a discussion about a perfect storm. All of us have used this term our entire lives, and up until, honestly, this week, I thought it was just an expression or a movie. I didn't know it was really an actual thing, a perfect storm. So I did a little deep dive, and a perfect storm is a severe weather phenomenon in which several factors cause a strong destructive storm. As your fire administrators, we have been in the eye of a perfect storm for five years. We have a membership in labor union that is full of trepidation caused by a long history of labor management relationship posturing, a budget that was held flat by cutting services to balance replacement pay shortfalls rather than working together to address complex issues that face our department, a COVID-19 pandemic that has sent call volume to an unprecedented height, and an economy that leaves us as fire administrators and other town administrators grasping to keep pace. This in turn has garnered the attention of the town council to question the service delivery modality and the budget needed to provide the value-added services this community demands. So tonight I sit here, no longer a potential candidate for Fire Chief, but always the servant leader of the town of Wallingford and the Wallingford Fire Department. It's my responsibility and goal to restore the faith in the fire administration and mend the relationship between our members, the town council, and the community. As you can see by the support I have behind me tonight in attendance, we are on our way to reestablish those honored commitments. As your dedicated and professional fire service administrators, we have taken an oath to serve and protect the citizens of Wallingford from all hazards and dangers. Tonight, we stand ready to support whatever decision the council makes, but still, we also stand firm in our commitment to the mission of the Wallingford Fire Department to provide the best emergency care and services to the citizens of Wallingford. Any review this council endorses should only enhance those commitments and provide a robust strategic plan for future success. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Mr. Laffin?
Right, you do have a lot of support here. It looks like it's two, three trucks here. Did you or someone order or ask them to come here tonight?
No order, no ask. It was more of a, they were upset about the last council meeting. There's been a lot of discussion, honestly, about the study. And I think it'll be honest who's not here tonight.
So there was no mass text sent out or anything?
Not from me.
Telling everybody, not from you, but from anybody below you?
Yeah, they have open communication and dialogue, yes.
Okay.
There's been open communication.
Just want to clarify. Yeah, because we've got a lot of on-duty guys here.
And off-duty also.
And they've been here for the last hour and a half now?
Correct.
Patiently waiting. I would think, based on everything you just said, that you would be in support of this.
That's what I said. Yes, I'm in support of the study.
So I think then we should just move forward, and we don't need a lot of debate. I think you hit the nail on the head when you said there's been an inability to confidently convince. I mean, it's been like four years now.
Yes.
Two chiefs, an acting chief, another one coming in. This is not about the service. If we get awards for, that's great, we should. Because, and I'm glad these guys are here, they do a phenomenal job. I hear that all the time when I'm going door-to-door, when I'm campaigning, when I'm talking to everybody, police, fire, amazing job. The concern has always been around the operation, the operational finance part. Are we as efficient or effective as we should be on a broad scale with this staffing model, which is different, which is unique, which in the beginning was supposed to be the best thing ever? Then maybe it wasn't. And it's just really frustrating to get to this point and still not have all those answers. So you are in support of the peer review with the career fire chiefs?
I'll do whatever you ask, because I'm your servant leader. But at the end of the day, I do not think that's going to produce the outcome if that's truly what the council is looking for.
So you don't support it?
I think it's for, are you saying that the fire administration's incompetent and that we're not doing our job?
No, not at all.
Well, that's typically what this is used for.
If that's typically what it's used for, we're up here to tell you that that's not what it is. We have specific questions that we'll be putting together with a focus area that has been bubbling up for the last four years. That you've been here for the last four years, right?
Yes.
As in the leadership. That's all that I have right now, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Reynolds?
If a town were interested in learning more about a fire department and not with the mechanism that you suggest would sort of be a vote of no competence, what would be the alternative?
I think that's what's been being pushed, and it seems that it has turned a complete 180. It was originally, there's been studies out there for every single fire department. They have these full review studies that go on. That was the original push here. There's been a lot of conversation in the background about why or why not we should have those. And it was the standpoint from the fire administration that we did not believe that was in the town's best interest for a variety of reasons. But if the town wants that, they should have that.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, though, so what Chairman Marone's proposing with fire chiefs, that's one thing. And I'm in research too, so I totally understand bias, you know, sort of coming into, you know, asking, having a testable statement, et cetera. But if not that, what he is suggesting, is there anything that you or the department would consider as an alternative to that?
I don't even think that I'm not saying the alternative. I think that, at the end of the day, in my world, and I've talked to the chief from North Haven also, and there is actually no, he does not know of any other time when they have this type of peer review to do what you're speaking of. He said, yes, typically it is that. But then, at the end of the day, I'm more than happy to sit through that. I'm confident. I've told many of you, I'm very confident what this is going to produce. And that's why I've told you, and I believe Chief Setnar had told you before, that we're confident with the study, if you were to pay for one, is going to produce. And you don't have to look far over to Southington. Meriden just had a study completed, Manchester's had a study completed. The others are escaping me right now, but there's dozens of them out there, and they pretty much all say the same thing. I know sometimes when we get up here, you start talking about technical jargon, start throwing around NFPA 1720. And as a researcher, you know, you have to have a basis in which you're guiding the study on. For us, it would be 1710, and that was the jargon I was using last time. So it's going to produce facts inside of a study, and it'll basically start to baseline us as a department for 1720. And that would answer questions regarding our service delivery model. Is it good, is it not? This peer review, there's going to be no report. There'll be a lot of questions asked, and I'm happy to sit through it. I'm confident of what the outcome will be. Thank you.
Any other questions? So just to elaborate on some of, you know, what I had said at the last meeting. I think part of the problem here is, in business, we do these kinds of studies all the time, right? Where you look at a particular aspect of something. And the Board of Education does studies like this all the time, where they look at a particular aspect of their operation to look for efficiencies or see if they're on the same track, they're meeting expectations. You know, I'm a part-time legislator, right? So I'm not going to look at the fire department and say, you should be doing this any particular way, right? Because I have no idea, that's not my area of expertise. So I'm looking to people that were, that I think have that expertise to provide that kind of guidance, right? So initially, I looked for the big study, where we spend the money, you know, they look at all the data, and so on. And so basically, the fire administration had suggested then that the big study would not yield the result. So I sort of went down this road, looking, talking to the former fire chief for something that I thought would be perhaps a little more on your level. Other fire administrators that sort of deal with the same things you deal with. So that seemed to me like the better alternative. But now, I feel like we're kind of going in the other direction, where you're saying the big study would be the, and perhaps I'm misreading, okay? All right.
Yeah, I just, I think that maybe perhaps we're just having a miscommunication. I think whatever study you decide to do is going to bring you to the same path.
Okay. No, and that's fair.
I think you'll have a, when we do a peer review study, I'll be providing the fire chiefs with all the data. When we have a, if we were to have a large-scale study, they'll be probing me for data, or whoever the fire administrator is, and they will still come to the same path. It's subjective whether or not you think paramedics should be on ambulances. A researcher still isn't going to tell you that. They're not going to give you their opinion on a matter. Researchers will, they'll offer you alternatives to solve the problems.
Appreciate it. Councilor Testa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief? Chief? I made some comments at the last meeting that I still feel strongly about. And that is, maybe I'll reword it tonight. But I spent many years in the field of, you know, sales and business development and so on and so forth. And there was a truism that I still believe applies to everything, and that's perception is reality. I don't care what reality is, but the perception is what drives people's opinions. Using just the term peer review and everything that it implies and how it often is used is distasteful to me. Because I don't care who you are, the perception will be that we have concerns about the professional management of our emergency services organization. And that's never been, first of all, that's never come up, and it's... And that's never been, first of all, that's never come up and it's, and that's, if that was an issue, it starts over there. The Director of Public Safety, the administration, who the administration, fire administration reports to. And if there was that much of a concern, then we would have a lot to talk about. But this goes back, and I mean, the problem with this is we're just, you know, everybody's just tap dancing. We're, we're tap dancing because we're afraid to say the wrong thing. We're afraid to piss off the wrong group. A year ago, I made a comment, which I thought was innocuous, because I was not potentially aware of any particular dissatisfaction, that I was under the impression that morale was pretty good and the, I just, it was an off-the-cuff comment. I got crucified for that by a lot of people that I've had a great relationship up to that point, rank and file people that, who I've supported for 30 years. There's never been a thing, an issue with public safety in this town that I haven't gone to bat for our, our, our people, ever. And I fought hard for things that were hard to get. So to then be put in a position of being told, I don't support them, that was a little upsetting, but it goes on. And that, I was like, okay, I better watch out. This is a lot deeper than I thought. Okay? So, and I'm talking frankly, I don't care. To me, there seems to be over the years, there is a labor management problem, issue. It could be better now? I don't know. But there are issues. Okay, that happens. We've received notice, you know, we've received letters over the years, memos, messages about problems certain people had with certain people and, and that's concerning. But it's very difficult as a town counselor who has no authority whatsoever over public safety in this town, other than passing a budget, to stick my nose in it. I would only be able to turn to the administration and say, what's going on? And what the heck's happening over here? Talk to people that I've known for 30 years, 40 years, and have deep respect for, who talk candidly to me privately and say, what the hell's going on over here? And we try to get to, you know, I say, okay, I understand, um, that, you know, okay. And I try to move on from there. But it's really, to me, this became an issue with the dramatic change in the model that was implemented by Chief Higard quite a few years ago. I mean, that's no secret. All right? There were concerns raised about that. And that's been the crux of this forever. So as I've heard about that, we've talked about it, we've talked to him when he was here, we talked to others. I've seen people bring up issues about, uh, what is, what is the, the best staffing? Heard about people working too much darn overtime and, and that's not good, aside from the money, you know, people having to be, you know, I've heard about legitimate complaints that there are labor issues, labor management issues. It's hard for me as a counselor to, again, stick my nose in that, because I don't know, none of us know really the whole story. So we, we try to express our, our concerns and, and, and see what's going on. But that, that was the, that was the issue, and it still seems to be the issue. But I think it led to other issues. And as again, I sit here today, just like I naively made a off-the-cuff comment a year ago about what I thought, you know, the morale of the overall department was, I don't know today, really. I, I look out and I see these amazing people that, some of them saved my life and the others are waiting to, um, you know, and I, I don't know why they're here. You know, are they here, support of you or support of this motion? I don't know. I haven't talked to them. But I'll try to wind this down. The issue to me still is that operational or structural component, how the organization is set up right now, from an operational standpoint, it's not how it's being managed. And that's a very different thing. And when we talk about bringing in outside professionals to do a peer review, um, none of that says to me, we're going to look at how you staff the ambulances. None of that, which is the issue. None of that is how are we staffing the houses? Are people given enough opportunity to go home? Because we're understaffed? How much of that is because we're not getting the hiring done? None of that. It's all has the perception that we think there are problems with our fire administration. That's the reality that is, we're going to be sending, if we proceed in this manner, calling it a peer review. If we really want, really want to get to the crux of this, which I, I think would be wonderful if we could, I would, we have to all work together and say, how can you do a complete examination of your structure? What, what Higer did? Blunt about it, what did he do? What, the changes he made that we carried through, is that still the best model? Should that be changed? And that discussion should be between you and your people that actually have to go out and do the job with potentially, you know, somebody, you know, moderating. If you said to me, we want to bring in a consultant to do that, like the old, like when, and Counselor Marone, I respect what you were saying, businesses do this all the time. They bring in consultants to talk about the operational structure. They're not there to do personnel reviews of who's in charge. They're talking about, how do you do business? And if, if we were able to come up with something where a, a study of that could be done with, with the administration and the rank and file in conjunction, sharing what the concerns they have, let it be moderated by someone from the outside, then I would, I'd be willing to consider that. But at this point, the way it's gone and the way it sounds tonight, I just don't like the impression it's going to, it's going to send out, the perception it's going to leave with the public. And frankly, I don't believe it's respectful to our administration. Who have a hell of a job to do. So that's it. Thanks.
So, so just to be clear, Counselor Testa, because before, when I had pushed for the, the larger study, the not peer-reviewed study, you were vehemently opposed to that. So are you saying that now you would be in favor of that study or you're not sure?
What do you mean by the large study?
So the, initially we had talked about bringing in like a consultancy group to look at the whole department, top to bottom, and sort of do a review of the department? That had been on a prior agenda.
Well, again, top to bottom. I mean, I, I think it was the impression, again, the way it sounded that I had objection to. But I've been thinking about it and I did listen to what you had to say.
Okay.
But, um, no, tonight, the wording tonight is just, is just.
Well, because we get.
If, I would fairly, fairly narrowly focused, um, if, uh, and, but this is not something I want to dictate. I would be in favor of it, because we'd have to say, hey, it might cost us 50 grand, I'll authorize the money. But we, they don't report to us. Frankly, this is something the administration should be doing. We could give them our, give the mayor our view and the mayor can initiate, uh, an examination of the staffing model. But this, that's a big deal, you know? But again, that's operational. The, the sense that I get from what we're talking about tonight, um, the response I'm seeing from professionals in front of us, who are being incredibly gracious, um, that tells me the perception of this is not good. It will leave the perception that there's a problem with the professionalism and the management of our public ser- safety organization. And, uh, we're bringing in outside chiefs to, to do an evaluation of them, not the operation. You want to word it differently, you want to structure it differently, um, I'm all ears, but the way it sounds tonight, I, I have a real problem with it.
Moving on to Counselor Fishbein?
So I think one of the aspects of this, the advent, or at least when I started to draw my attention to it, was the, the replacement pay, um, in the budget, um, you know, the numbers getting large, right? And as you may recall, last time we were here, not the last time, but the time before, that was actually a, an action item. I was like, and I voted against, I think, and, you know, it was a very close vote. I guess one of my problems with the peer review, as I'm hearing about it now, is that we would be formulating questions. And I think there's only, with all due respect, I think there's only one of us up here who has an amount of experience to possibly formulate those questions, that being Counselor Tata and her recent training. But it's recent, right? So she, you know, she hasn't been a firefighter for a long time and all of that stuff. I know it'd be difficult for me to formulate questions that, you know, looking to get, you know, ultimately, you want to know, is the department healthy, right? That, that's essentially, it's a, it's a yes or no. How you get there is very gray, but at the end of the day, that's our responsibility, working along with the administration. But just like, you know, a patient going into a doctor, you know, I'm not a doctor, I don't know what to ask about when you got a tummy ache, you know? You got a tummy ache. I, but, you know, so if there is an issue with the fire department, I gotta tell you, I can review questions, I can apply logic, but I don't know the ins and outs of being a firefighter. So that's a concern. I, I guess if we assume that there is a perceived issue, and, you know, Counselor Testa's correct, people walk on eggshells when we talk about this. What is the path to follow? I mean, even, you know, chief or deputy chief or however you want to be addressed, you know, you mentioned tonight, I'm no longer a candidate for the chief position, right? And that's sort of like press release sort of information, you know, mic drop.
I think I just wanted you to know that my, the reason I'm telling you this is so that's earnest. I have nothing, no agenda. I think that you're right, uh, Counselor, you're hitting it the nail on the head. We walk around eggshells, eggshells here. You know, questions being asked to me of how many people I've texted to come out here, you know, to tell me that there's two trucks here. That'd be six people. I think what the problem is, is our department has internal problems that we've been dealing with and it's part of walking on those eggshells. And I think there's a lot of back-dooring that's going around. I think we've had a lot of private meetings as counselors to lay it all out there. And I think that's what it is, not for a press release, but to kind of finally air it out here right now, so that we can move forward, because this has been four years. I've been in this, I've been in the fire administration four and a half years. And this has literally been my entire time here, back and forth. Are we having a study? Is the, is the service delivery great? Is it not? Obviously, I'm biased. I think it's great. You know, I was on the front line with other people here that led us to the EMS agency of the year. So then to be told, oh, you're doing it wrong, we think we should do this, we think we should do that. Typically, when these opinions are offered, there's no, there, that's what they are, there's opinions. But then we never get to the point of the hows. How are we going to do that? You have to think that these professional fire administrators before me chose to make this change because we had problems and they saw them on the horizon, but yet we're not calling them visionaries. We're saying we should go back to an old way of doing something. But it's literally state and national news right now that there's a shortage of paramedics. Right now, I'm competing for the same 15 firefighter paramedics every single year with Manchester, East Hartford, Branford, West Hartford, for 15 people. We're going to have three openings that I know of right now for, and there's more firefighter paramedics, I'm missing that right now. We're going to all have the same opening. So then the question is, is how do we fill our jobs there? Great, let's have firefighter paramedics everywhere. But how do I fill those? Well, that's not the people's problem that is coming forward and saying firefighter paramedics, we should go back to the old way. The last, I was very privileged to have the before and after here. I had the before, the last test that we ran before this, um, before we switched over, I had one applicant, he was just fired from West Hartford. So the applicant after that, I had two, and we were very fortunate to hire both of them. As soon as we switched over to this new model, on average, please don't quote me on this, we're getting 15 to 16 applicants. It's at least that. So what has changed? Obviously, the change to the service delivery model has helped us, because now the job is more appealing. But before, with the riding the ambulance, I'm not getting those applicants. So the fire administrators before us were visionaries that they said they have a problem, they need to make a change. Now, whether or not they should be municipal EMTs, I think our single role municipal EMTs, I was just, had to write a paper on the entire thing for a fire officer class, was intriguing to the entire class. A lot of hows, whys, talked about the budgeting shortfalls that we've had, the budgeting challenges and everything else, because no system is perfect. But we walk around on eggshells, as you're saying, trying to, um, I guess posture, as I've said, to make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting it out there, that we are successful, that the men and women that run this department are successful, and that we're going to continue providing continuity of service. But we're never getting to the crux of the issue. Nobody seems to want to talk about the issue. You know, so if it's replacement pay, I mentioned here, replacement pay's been a problem for over a decade, well over a decade in this department. But the problem now it's on the forefront is my predecessor, Chief Settar, budgeted it for it in full. I could say before that, there's a million different tactics on how to control replacement pay. Sometimes it's cutting of services. Now, Counselor, you've been here a long time. How many times have we been here to talk about cutting Rescue 3? That was a replacement pay tactic to keep it in check. So instead of addressing replacement pay, now this is spiraling out of control, talking about modality of service, which is fine, we can talk about modalities of service, we could talk about whether or not we're running the right thing, and that's why I guess I'm asking, is it my for a study or against a study? Ego would say we're against the study. I do not have an ego for it. I'm confident in what you would find. By the numbers, our department performs exceptionally. It's up to the community how they want to, how they want to staff things.
So let me, and I appreciate all that. And, you know, as to meetings, I'm not one of the cool kids. I don't go to those meetings. I don't know who, who's having meetings. So we're still talking, you know, eggshells, I, you know, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's going on, right? What's the relationship between police and fire in this town compared to other towns?
I would say, you know, it's, we were actually quite ironically talking about that today. I would say our relationship between us has been exceptional for at least my time in the chief's office. I communicate with them all the time, uh, you know, even if we have a problem, I run a past Deputy Chief DeMaio frequently.
I see other towns though, and, you know, I've been to, um, like the first responders dinner at the Elks, um, and, you know, that's mostly police and I don't see any fire attending. And in other towns, I see, you know, get-togethers between police and fire, you know, first responders arm-in-arm, you know, because, you know, it's like one of the only professions that you, you leave home in the morning not knowing if you're coming home at night, right? So brothers-in-arms get together. I don't see that in this town. And it, I don't know if that's a, a function of what isn't being talked about. You know, we hear about internal strife on the second hand, that kind of stuff. But ultimately, if in my mind, a peer review is not appropriate, because I don't know that this body has the ability to formulate appropriate questions that gets to the answer, what is the answer? Just to go on as we have been?
I don't think so. And I think that's the purpose of my statement, is that I'm tired. I'm tired of having to continue to talk about that. And I think that's why when the, the, they asked me, there was a lot that's happened over this last two weeks, and as I've said to the mayor, that it was like a lightning bolt through this department. And my job is to provide, to. And my job is to provide direction to this department right now, in the interim period. And these things, whether we know it or not, fracture our department, because there's a lot of backdooring that's going on. There's a lot of side conversations that are having, and I don't think that we're having open dialogue. At the very least, when we have these meetings, when it's not a quorum, we're having open dialogue, and these issues are being talked about and discussed, back and forth. And now that leads us to the question is, is whether or not you believe us of what we're saying. You know, so only thing I can do, other than offer my opinion, Chief Sentnar, he can offer his opinion, is we offer quantifiable statistics. And I think that's probably one thing that we all agree upon, is that our department is running efficiently. That we're getting to calls, we're doing a great job, these people are providing exceptional service to our community. Now, it's the opinion of how it should be provided. And I don't even think a researcher at the end of the day is going to come and say the hows. You know, they're going to say, you're going to ask a question, and you should say, ask the question about, should firefighter paramedics be on every response unit, including the ambulance for EMS transport again? Now, as a fire chief, I would respond, how? How do we recruit for that? How do we get them there? We've already seen these failures. So the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different outcomes. So we would be sitting here in a very different forum if we just kept down the same path. Poor recruitment, unable to provide service, you know, we have to do something, and I think that's what we did. And this predated me. I stepped into this in 2020 with a retirement. They asked me to come up and do this and help out. And we had, we had a service model that we put into service that was designed, it was negotiated, and we put it into service. And there's been bumps in the road, of course, with anything that you're going to do, but our job as fire administrators is to constantly review and reform as we go along to make sure that it's operating well. And it is operating well.
No, I, and it could be operating well, but behind, I don't know. You know, because I don't know, I hear things, that's it. You know, it's sort of like, I don't know if you, Elsbeth is a new show on TV this past year about an embedded woman who goes into a police department, and she reviews. It's a great show. But anyway, it's like, we need somebody like that. I don't necessarily support the peer review situation based upon what I said earlier. I would be in support of more of a review. I mean, I guess if you, if you say, we're going to do a peer review because it's quicker and it's cheaper, well, you know, maybe you get a quicker, cheaper answer also, that I don't know is recognizable and that we can rely upon. So, and I don't know that we've been down the road, that we've talked about how much an actual review would be. Because I think at a certain level, for leadership, that may close the door on this, you know, because I can understand, you know, you're hearing, oh, it's on an agenda again, here they go again, you know, and it's demoralizing. I could, I could see it, you know? But on the other hand, you may have rank and file that are saying, well, it's about time. And I don't know, right? But I think we got to come to a head here. That's all I wanted to say at this point. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Laffin.
You know, we're talking about perception. A peer review to me does not sound bad. I don't, coming from the business world, people do peer reviews all the time. So, did, I wasn't in the meeting, Chairman Maron, did Chief Stru, or the mayor, did Chief Struble indicate that this was this volatile, terrible, doomsday thing to do?
No, Chief Struble indicated that this would be a lower cost and less exhaustive review of the department, to get sort of other people in that field, you know, to review the practices at the, with the information provided by our fire administration.
Yeah, and, I mean, that's, that was, that's my perception of what it would be. So I'm glad that jives. And I also, you know, maybe we get all the answers we want, or we need, and we all feel good and confident again. Or it's a first step towards a different type of review. This also can't be, you know, a vote of no confidence. You guys haven't been chief. This, there is no chief right now. You're acting chief, you're operations focused, I imagine. There's, you're down a chief, and you're just, you're all about service right now. The primary function of the fire department. This isn't a vote of no confidence thing. This is just, let's look at the operations and the finance part, so we can figure out what's going on a little bit. It can only help the experience level, but they're also very busy, a chief down running things. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, chiefs. I'm not, I'm not, I feel like I'm missing something, because I'm not sure how we went from study to peer review. I know that the mayor and the chairman met with a former chief, and then next thing I knew was, it was a peer review. I know when we were talking about that at the last meeting, I said I wasn't sure, I'm sure Chief Struble's a fine gentleman, but I, I just wonder if we're trying to get, you know, a truly unbiased opinion, why we would go to somebody who was a former chief. And then, you know, it was said that, well, he's just going to give us options and advice, that sounded okay, so we went with that. But then, I think after that meeting, now it's come out that we don't have options, it's really, this is the option, so a peer review. You know, Mr. Chairman, you just said that the peer review is less exhaustive and more cost-effective. I don't, I don't think we want less exhaustive at this point. And we've been talking about this for years. And I think if, if we're going to do it, we have a truly independent study that will look at, you know, all aspects of this. We all get this study, we put it behind us, we, you know, take what we want from it, and move ahead. The peer review to me seems like something else is going on, and I'm not sure what exactly, you know, why we're going down that road. The other thing, just in regards to that, so I think there's kind of three different, three different options here, possibly. We've got this peer review, which seems like, I, I mean, I really don't think there's the votes for that. I'm just listening to what everybody's saying. I don't think there is. I think some of us are uncomfortable with that. The study, I think we may have the votes for. You know, the Charter, Chapter 4, Section 10, says the council, by a vote of at least three members, shall have power to investigate any and all departments, offices, and agencies of the town. Is that what this is? Is that what a peer review is? Is that what a study is? I don't know. I'm not, is that what, are we, are we embarking on that investigation, in which case it only requires three votes? I'm not sure.
Are you asking, or is it rhetorical?
Please.
Okay. So my reading, based on my reading of the Charter, I think you could start an investigation with three votes, but to spend money on an investigation, you would have to have five votes plus the consent of the mayor. So I think three of us could conduct our own investigation per se, or, you know, undertake some other action, but to spend the money, you would need to follow the traditional process.
Okay, and is that, I mean, I guess, I guess I'll just ask a question. Is that, is that why we went with the peer review? Is the administration perhaps not wanting to spend the money on the full study? Maybe that's what came out of that meeting, I'm not sure.
No, so actually, how this went down, is this, we voted on this at a prior meeting for the full study, and the, it was kind of, we didn't necessarily have the votes, and the mayor had suggested that he had a relationship with the former chief, and that might be a good way to gather more information. So I had come to the last council meeting, or maybe a couple of council meetings ago, with the councils, with a request to the council to meet with former Chief Struble and sort of get a discussion of where else we could go. So the peer review was the next place that we could potentially go with it. So I guess, I have two concerns. So one is, the fear of the study is, does not, is greater than the magnitude of the study, right? So there's some, and I'm not looking at the fire administration, I'm looking at the people on the dais here. I feel like there's some folks up here that are afraid of, when you turn the rock over, what you're going to find underneath, right? I don't know what we're going to find. I genuinely don't know what we're going to find. We had the situation with the, you know, we had the enterprise fund for the ambulance, it didn't work out, and that was an innovative attempt, and it failed. And we all know it failed, because we dissolved the enterprise fund, right? So then you hear things from the rank and file, like, well, there's not enough staff, and guys are working too many hours, and et cetera, et cetera. But again, I can't tell you if that's accurate or not, right? Because I can tell you anecdotally what guys tell me, but I don't, I really can't tell you, because that's not my area of expertise. In every business, there's an element of complaining that goes on, right? Like, you know, you're dealing with people, so there's always an element of complaining. Sometimes it's legitimate, and sometimes it isn't. So I'm just trying to separate the wheat from the chaff. So I'd be in favor of either the, the sort of larger scale study, or the peer study. I kind of thought the peer study would be more in the line, I thought that that would be softer on the fire administration, and I could be wrong about this, but my perception was, it would be softer on the fire administration, because it is their peers talking to them about their business, as opposed to having outsiders who are not their peers, who are looking at the, you know, the business from a different kind of lens. So that's, that's how the, that's how we got to the peer study.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That, that makes sense, but it sounds like, it sounds like it's the, it's the opposite of that, correct, chief?
I just think that, you know what, I, as I indicated, I talked with the chief from North Haven quite a bit about it, and, you know, he did confirm to me that typically, this is very atypical to happen in this, in this way and manner. And then, he also said that it would not yield any report findings, really, it would be dialogue about what happened. So, you know, as Counselor Fishbein said, is like, yes, I cringe to see this on the agenda again, because it's an exhaustive topic, and we'll be back here again, because we're not going to get the solutions unless you think that's going to satiate whoever these people are calling for the study. And, because there's not going to be a real study. What's going to happen is, is what are the perceived problems? I'm going to whip out the table that has been created that shows the cost per capita, it's pretty accurate. I'm going to have analytical data. I have newspaper articles, maybe two, three dozen about difficulties in hiring. You know, the award will be sitting there for EMS Agency of the Year. You know, I'll reference all the chiefs that, maybe they're going to be in the room, the ones that have been asking us, how are we doing it? Branford, right now, is putting theirs online, same exact system. So, these are all things we're going to talk about, so what else is there to talk about? And if that's not going to get us to where inevitably we want to go, I don't want to say, why are we wasting our time, but we're going to be back here again, having the same dialogue. Let's get off the eggshells, and let's just find a solution together. And I think that's my point of tonight.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, is it, it's your understanding, though, the peer review, I think the chief said, the peer review would only talk to the chiefs, correct?
Well, you could bring whatever stakeholders in the room that you wanted to, right? So it could be counselors, it could be rank and file, I mean, it would really be up to us.
But this is a, this is a one, like, you mentioned, we would have to buy lunch. This is a one day?
This is a one day, like, yeah, they described it as like a three to four hour meeting in one day.
I don't, I think, I think we're going to be right back here, a week later, because I don't, I don't think three to four hours is addressing what, you know, three to four years of what we've been, you know, what's been being discussed. Mr. Mayor, did you, I thought you might look like you wanted to say something.
Just to clarify how former Chief Struble ended up in the room. He is part of the Fire Sciences Program at the University of New Haven. In one of our prior meetings where we discussed this, he was brought up as a possible source of providing some review of data through his students. So to add to the possibilities for discussion, I contacted him to see if that was something that we could consider. And he advised me that at this point, the program that he's teaching is virtual, and that he does not have enough students in Connecticut to utilize for that sort of thing, and offered to meet with us to see what else could be suggested. So, that was kind of the roadmap that got the three of us in a room.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I, you know, I didn't mean any, certainly no judgment on that meeting, I just, you know, for me personally, I think if we're going to look at this completely independently, we might want to, you know, look outside of someone who had, you know, involvement with the department, but I think that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that, is that a motion?
Well, there's a motion on the floor, correct? For the, for the peer review.
I would be willing to accept a friendly motion to pursue the larger study if that was the, if you thought that was in the best interest of the department.
I think you just got it from Counselor Fishbein.
Okay. Is there a second?
Counselor Allison. I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Allison.
So, I am also tired of you guys all spending your time in front of us. I think that if you don't believe that, if you think that a peer review is something that is going to be really looking at essentially administration, and that the perception is as it has been quantified up here, I, I don't agree necessarily, but if, if that is, perception is reality, right? And as Counselor Testa said, if that's your reality, then I don't, I don't, that's not what I, how I want to act, right? But I also don't want to continue this circle of us questioning, and, and us getting statistics, and us, you know, trying to understand why we're still getting information that says otherwise, right? And I don't, I don't want anybody to think that we have no confidence in our first responders, our ability to create and stick to a budget, our administration of either fire or police, but let's put it to bed, then. I'm, I don't want you guys to continue to waste your time until now 9:30 at night, after you've seen all of these other agenda items going on, and we still have more, when we have a device that would independently say, you're doing fine. And I believe that you're doing fine. And I think if that's what comes out of this, then it's going to quiet the voices that we, that we keep hearing, saying, we're not doing fine, though. So, I would have been for the peer review, because from my perspective, I think it's easier to be reviewed by my peers, when I look at it person to person in my own world, right? But if that's different in your world, then I don't want to put you through that. I also don't really want to put you through some rigorous study that's going to waste your time there either, but if that's where we have to go to get to the end of this conversation, then let's just go. Again, I have every faith in the ladies and gentlemen in your department. I believe you when you say you're going to, it's just going to highlight all of the same things that you keep highlighting to us. I just essentially also think that this is a conversation that's going to continue unless we come to some end here. And I don't want people saying that we didn't do our due diligence, but we continue to put you in front of us and berate you, or drag you across the coals. I do not, I don't, that's not how I like to operate or represent myself, so let's, let's kill it, let's put it to bed, let's, let's do whatever we have to do, and let's do it in the least offensive way possible. I understand that either way is kind of taking offense. I've also been through an audit myself, which is like the highest audit you can have when you're in distribution services, right? It's Sarbanes-Oxley. And I failed the audit. Come to find out, it was a fake audit, but I still felt, first of all, very offended that I was the one audited, because I was like, I'm doing my job. I missed one thing, failed the audit, and it was, and it wasn't like this, where it's, you're not, you can't fail on one thing in a full review. But this was, it was one thing, one order, out of 18,000 orders, and I still felt so hurt by the fact that somebody took issue with that one thing. So I understand, in a way, where, how it feels to be reviewed and to have some small thing come up. But I also understand that as, as a worker, and as a person who is in distribution services, that is not the entire makeup of my being. And that is, that is not the entire makeup of your being, should something come out. I don't think there will be. Again, I wholeheartedly believe you, but I can understand the personal relationship that you have to your own business, because I also have that relationship to my own business, as we all do up here with this, with our jobs and our, and our families. So I completely, I feel for you that this is coming up, but I don't want it to keep coming up. So, my vote will be for a full study, rather So my vote will be for a full study rather than a peer review. And it's simply to say, I'd rather support you in that than support you in something that you're finding more offensive and because I want this to go away. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein?
So I concur with everything that Counselor Allison just said. I'm glad that we were able to, without a vote yet, get to this place. I think this is the time to do something like this because we are without a chief. We certainly, if we are doing something wrong and correct, if there's a culture issue or something like that, then whoever takes over that post, you know, it's not, well, that's the way they've always done it, and I'm going to continue to do it. Maybe a review would be of guidance and direction and, you know, we don't know the experience that the individual have. Just taking a step back, though, we have limited power, so I'd go to the mayor, do we have money? Are you in support? That kind of stuff?
As I sit here, I'm not sure where this money would come from. You know, if it's, if, I also question whether or not the cost would be something that would require, require us to bid the service, you know, if it's going to exceed the minimum bid threshold. So those issues have to be identified.
Would it be, well, I'm going to suggest that perhaps an RFP and perhaps there's a small group, including the, you know, both deputy chiefs, maybe, you know, a member from the council and, you know, appointee from the administration or the mayor yourself, you know, to, I mean, we certainly do that, we're supposed to do that with the audit process, and quite frankly, I think this is a little bit more important, with all due respect to the audit process, to vet whomever does this. So, you know, I'm sure we can probably come up with the money, but I think we're going to have to be selective. And I think, you know, the department's going to have to be comfortable, leadership with whom is selected. So I suggest that. I would expect that this would also extend to the fire marshal, correct?
I think it should be, including Fire Prevention Division, yes.
Okay. Because I just, you know, as I'm sitting here thinking about this, I reflect back on the fire marshal situation with the historic train station, which, quite frankly, I was appalled at and that I did speak to certain individuals state, and they were appalled at. So as I reflect upon that, you know, I think we're better off with something more than a peer study. So I think we're at a good place. At least I'm a little bit more comfortable. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when we last spoke about this, I did say that I was in favor or I was, I don't know if I said I was in favor. I'll have to watch the meeting again. But what I am in favor of is more of a top to bottom and probably a larger study. I come from the world where peer review is the standard to which your science goes to the next step. So peer-reviewed publications are the standard for research. However, ignorance, and ignorance isn't a bad word. I'm ignorant to what peer-reviewed means in your world, and therefore I have no interest in stepping on those toes in any way. My larger concern, or at least what I'm in favor of, given that we are having a new chief, given that we've had a few chiefs over the last few years, given, and I'm not privy to this, and I'm fully ignorant of any kind of eggshells or anything like that. You guys were nice enough to have me over at your place, volunteers were nice enough to have me over at their place. I was thoroughly impressed by everybody. Everybody was friendly, informative, and helpful. I think you do a great job. But what I, what I would be in favor of is a full report that could be handed off to whoever the new chief is, that is an assessment of the situation, including the volunteer program and everything else, and let them move forward with it. And I think that, you know, and again, we get away from bias, you know, I, that, to me, seems the way to go. I don't know what something like that costs, but that's what I would be in favor of. Soup to nuts, top to bottom, assessment of the whole thing, not just who's in charge, not just who's on an ambulance, but the whole thing. And that's, that's my end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Any members of the public? All right, Madam Click, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information. Would you, would you mind just rereading the motion since it changed? So the motion that we're voting on?
So the motion that we're voting on is to explore a large-scale study of the department.
Thank you.
If you could call the roll, please.
Allison?
Yes.
Harman D?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Lappin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Moron?
Yes, motion unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, if there's no objection, then instead of going on to the executive session, I'd like to go on to the addendum items, and we'll do the executive session at the end. All right, item number 14, update and discussion regarding the status of the Community Pool project. Counselor Testa, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was looking for an update from the administration and a brief discussion of what people would like to see us go forward. So I would just leave it up to the mayor at this point to start. Thank you.
So we have taken the specifications that were previously bid in 2020, and we've given them to, I believe it's Downs Construction. They are working up cost estimates for us to examine and discuss, and that would be our next step before we then determine whether or not we're going to go out to bid with the project. I've had some discussion with staff, management staff, who deal with the contracting world, and there is a concern that if you just go to bid with a project, you know, if there's not confidence in the industry that the project's going to go forward, you might not get a great bid response. So my thought is for us to look at estimates or making educated decisions before we then go out to bid. I anticipate having the estimates anytime now. Quite frankly, it's been several weeks.
Thank you. All right, so it appears that we will, as soon as that happens, you can request, you can let us know we'll have an agenda item. And then I anticipate we'll talk about that and get everybody's view on, on how they want to go forward. And I just want to make sure this is still at the forefront of our minds, and we make a decision on how to move forward as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
I just wanted to, well, A, I'll thank my wife because she texted me this, but B, the Cheshire Splash Pad was purchased with a steep grant, but it was applied for last year, and that the steep grant cycles usually don't open up until July. So if we were interested in finding this type of money for a project such as this, if we qualify, I think they get, it gets posted in July. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, have we been doing anything to maintain or make sure that the infrastructure at the site is not deteriorating so as to cause additional expense?
That would be public works, and I will ask.
Okay. Because I know somebody posted a picture of weeds and stuff. I mean, I'm not asking for it to be mowed, and I don't know what would be necessary. I'm just concerned because I think the property has been untouched by human hands for like three years now, so.
Or four.
Yeah. So somebody's going to have to do a walkthrough when they bid on this thing, which, well, thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Members of the public?
Jason Michael Meadow Street. Just to clear it up, we do maintain that property. It's mowed and weed-whacked and locked. And then it's mowed and weed-whacked and locked. And I've been up here before, and I still don't understand why we're not using it as a green space. We pay to keep care of it. And for three years, that's all we've done, is pay to keep care of it and then lock the gate on the way out. There's a pool in there, I get it, it's empty. Is it a danger? It's fenced off and locked, so it's inside of the park locked. And as far as the, I just had a question on the pricing for the project. Is it, is it going to be itemized? In other words, if memory serves, and it's been so long now, I believe the splash pad that was in the plan was just below half a million dollars, which we just approved to spend on a vehicle to replace fully operational vehicles. Not to be snarky, but that's another half a million dollars that, that park could be open with a splash pad and maybe the plans for a future pool. So I don't know if this company's going to give us it in pieces, or do we, can we consider doing the project in pieces because there could be an operational splash pad now without cost of the town beyond it, as they don't need to be manned by a lifeguard, and we have a park that we mow and weed-whack and lock. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mayor, if you could close the loop on this project, that would be amazing.
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure, no pressure. Oh, we've got a laycomer.
That's Eba, Maple Avenue. So way back when, I was part of the original group of Friends of Community Pool to reopen it. So that was a long time ago. You guys could tell me the year. I don't know what the year was. Overall, is it your intention to have this back up and running in your heart of hearts, or is it something that, under your leadership, this is not really a viable project for our town? And as far as walking on eggshells, I don't think, I don't want to be offensive in asking that. I just think that it's gone on and on and on, and I'm just wondering what is the holdback? Is it simply that there's not a plan that people can agree on? Because of course, every year, those plans are going to get more expensive. Is it the fact that it's the expense because, is it the design? Is it the interest? Like, what is your feeling on it?
So I could sit here and do nothing, and I'm not doing nothing. We're finding out how much it's going to cost, and it's, we're going to come back and we're going to have a discussion about how much it's going to cost. And ultimately, I am going to allow the council to decide if, in fact, this project should go forward. It's, you know, the prices we had in 2020 were about seven and a half million for the whole park to be redone as redesigned and with great detail and additional features, you know, including much more equipment in what is just the green space now. It was quite a robust proposal. You know, we all know that there's been a change in the economy since COVID, and everything that was one price in 2020 is no longer the same price. And so we're going to, we're going to see, we're going to see what the optimal way is to go forward. You know, perhaps that park as proposed and fully developed is, is more than the council is interested in investing, and we can have a discussion about that.
Okay. All right. And as far as the council's concerned, do you guys already have like an idea in mind of, okay, if it's this amount of dollars, it's something we want to consider? Or is it more in your minds, this is the kind of equipment and this is what we want the facility to look like? Just overall, if anyone's willing to comment on that, just because there's been numerous studies and numerous designs, and there just hasn't been agreement.
So to go back to your first question, and I think the mayor was very kind in the way he presented it, but I think the prior administration-
Thank you.
Wasn't interested in the project, essentially, right? I think they liked the project, but I think the cost, it was always cost prohibitive. So I think we're sort of in a new day as far as, as far as that goes. I can only speak for me as far as the balance of the project, and everyone else can have an opportunity to respond to, but for me, it comes down to what's the scope of the project and what's the cost, right? So if it's, if, you know, if the cost is exorbitant, could we look at like multiple splash pads or some other configuration? I think, you know, like, I loved Community Pool, and I think that the saying people aren't going to use it, I think is sort of foolish based on, I think if you had an attractive park, like all the other, all the surrounding towns have attractive parks like that, and they get used. So I think it's something that would be an asset to the communities. But, but again, it all comes down to, you know, cost versus what, the benefit.
Okay, so still a viable-
Definitely viable.
-project that's under consideration. All right, good to hear.
Mr. Fishbein?
Your hand up. I saw that.
I just, one of the votes up here that I regret was when I voted in favor of the administration against overriding the veto. Sitting here now, I know that even if I had voted the other way and we had appropriated the money, the project wouldn't have happened for various reasons. But understanding that even when we get this information back, if all nine of us are in support, we cannot initiate the project. Under our charter, the mayor has to make a recommendation to us to appropriate the money, and then he has to be supportive of the project through purchasing, because purchasing is, you know, so the administration oversees-
Hence my first question, right.
Purchasing, right? So from my personal perspective, I think it's a shame that we don't have a pool. There's not much for our kids to do. I mean, they can't play on the bubbling up basketball courts. We don't have a pool, you know, and they just got out of school, and I think it's a travesty. I will tell you, you know, I've been yelling and screaming about the basketball courts at Highland School for years now, and I did get a text the other day from the Board of Education, they did replace them, so at least on that side of town, kids can do something. I'm hoping that we have the pool back. You know, when I first got up here, my first term, we used to allow Wallingford residents to use the pool at Sheehan.
Yes, we did.
And the prior administration took that away from the residents of this town. And I would hope, and we haven't had the discussion, you know, but certainly that's something that we could look into in the absence of Community Pool. But I'm looking for, I don't have a pool in my backyard, right? I'm looking to be able to use something to get cool on weeks like this, and as I said, I think it's an absolute shame that we don't have something. So ever since that vote that I regret, I have been supportive of the project because I think we need it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to the council. Any other comment on this topic? All right, and there's no motion on the table, so we'll move on to number 15, discussion of possible action on the leasing of parking spaces in Simpson Court for the use of outdoor dining. Mr. Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, we had a conversation about outdoor dining in Simpson Court two meetings ago. And although the topic of payment for the usage of this property was, was brought up, the idea was not thoroughly discussed or entertained by the council. And so I wanted to have that discussion and to see if there was an appetite to pursue such an option. I wanted to continue this conversation because I believe that Simpson Court is a unique feature to our town center, and with the on-street outdoor dining, we really observe it become a true gem for Wallingford. It becomes a real destination, bringing people out and into town, bringing people together, making a lively community atmosphere for the outdoor season in the heart of our town. There are valid viewpoints on all sides of this issue, and that's what's made it so tough. But again, I think there's a lot of value in this from a community standpoint, from a downtown marketing and revitalization standpoint. And so I wanted to talk about this a little bit more tonight to see if we could tackle some of the issues we were unable to. At the last meeting, this was discussed. I know some say parking is an issue, but I want to remind everyone that the town not long ago made significant investments in creating sizable, quality parking lots off of Center Street and behind North Main Street where there are always spots available. I've heard some say this only benefits three establishments. I've heard some say this only benefits three establishments. I don't see that as the case. I think this creates excitement and interest about our town center as a whole. It creates additional foot traffic and makes visible all the great things that our town has to offer. People visit different establishments for dessert or for coffee or for a glass of wine. Do these three businesses benefit more than others? Yes, and that's why we are now talking about having them put skin in the game. Our mayor provided us at the previous meeting information that the town assessor calculated that the parking spots would be valued at $150 per month per space. I'm going to use that as my starting point for my motion. But I am certainly open to ideas and welcome to amendments. I'm not sure if all restaurants are interested in participating this year. I've had a few casual conversations and know that there is interest, at least by some, in pursuing a payment arrangement. And so this would be the criteria we set and those Simpson Court establishments who want to participate can opt in if they so choose. I'm hopeful that we can find some way to make this work. I think this is a great thing for the vibrancy of Wallingford's town center and a great thing for our community. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we permit the leasing of parking spaces at $150 per month per space to dining establishments in Simpson Court from now until October 1st, 2024, and that the participating establishments coordinate with the town administration on the implementation of the agreement.
Second. Okay, so motion's made in second. So before we go to questions, Janice, so what is the, what is the town's ability, what is the council's ability to negotiate with businesses on public, the use of public land?
Well, I'm not sure why you would say that it can only be for three people, but it can't be for, I mean, there are other restaurants that, about public streets with parking spaces. So I'm not sure why you would limit it to someone. And most places that do that, most towns that do that, do that by an ordinance, which probably would be the appropriate vehicle if you're going to do that. So the whole issue of, you know, I did take a look at it because, you know, the state, because of COVID, the laws were changed. And parking spaces on, not on the street were included in that. And so, I mean, it's kind of an interesting dynamic. There's no specific straight authority for it, but it really, I think, comes down to, because other towns, what the way of other towns have done it is you're essentially agreeing to close off that section of a public road. Most towns that do it would include input from Traffic Authority, Public Works, I think there was somebody else, Fire Marshal in making the decision as to whether or not it's appropriate in a given space. So there's no express authority for doing that on a public street. But it, you know, I think that it's, it's probably viewed as being you're closing down a section of a public road to do that. But I do think, you know, you would have to have at least the Traffic Authority weigh in on that. But, you know, the broader question is you, if you say yes to a few, what about the rest? Because if I have a restaurant and I'm on a public street, now we have a problem because a lot of this is state roads, so that's not, that's going to pull them out of the equation. Why can't I apply for the same thing? And in that framework, you probably, if you're going to do that and you want to do it on that scale, I think certainly an ordinance would be the best in the, in the long run to, to put together if that's what you were thinking of doing.
All right, and go to the council for questions, starting with Councilor Fishman. I'm sorry, Councilor Fishman, Councilor Reynolds, grab me first, if you wouldn't mind yielding.
Janice, is it also true, I mean, if we are potentially renting public property to an identifiable user, they would have the ability to oust that individual from the rented area?
I'm sorry, oust who?
So one of the things that we heard last time is that some people like to sit in this area and listen to music and see their friends dancing in, in the area. If we are now saying potentially that we are renting to this particular restaurant, wouldn't they have the ability to charge a cover to set a amount of time that one could use the table, all of that stuff? Because they're, they're then owning that area.
Yeah, it would either be by lease or a license. I think some towns actually you'd call it a license instead of a lease agreement. But yes, I mean, we, they would, they are paying for the exclusive use of that space.
And the analysis that you were looking at, parking spaces not on the street for the purposes of the state statute, that, if I recall correctly, is parking spaces owned by the establishment, not owned by the government?
Yeah, owned by the establishment or the landlord. So if you, you know, if you have a rental, like if you're in a shopping center and you, you don't own the shopping center, but you have a restaurant there, you could use those parking spaces provided the owner of the property gave consent.
Yeah, and that was a matter of right because it's an expansion of zoning in effect.
Right, exactly. And the law, yeah, it makes it, the statute made it an accessory use. So now when you talk about, so the statute doesn't specifically say you could do this on a public, on parking, on spaces on a public street. It doesn't say that. So, you know, in looking at, well, how did the towns that do it get there? I mean, unless you look at it as a broad power under 7-148, which, you know, I'm assuming it's, it comes into, you have the, the right to shut down a portion for certain activities. And that's really where it's coming from. Either that or nobody's really thought about, well, where is the authority to do this? I'm not sure, but.
Well, because I did look at the cafe statute today in conjunction with the liquor permit, you know, because a lot of this is liquor related. And I don't see it in there, but, you know, the vote at the, it's sort of like, the motion that's on the table is really not appropriate. It's just like throwing something out there, like the, the motion that we voted on at the last meeting, 98% of the people that reacted to that motion had no idea what we voted on. If you recall, what the motion was, was to have outdoor dining like it was last year or less, which is basically a nullity. Or less. But when do you determine the or less? Who's going to determine the or less? It could be zero.
I really understand what, what is, what was the vote?
That was the motion, that was, exactly.
Was I there?
That was the vote. No, I think Jerry was there. That was the motion that was made and actually voted on at the last meeting, which is a nullity. It, it, you know, so when they say, oh, you voted against it, you know. Anyway. Part of the problem here, why aren't we enforcing the current ordinance? You know, I was driving from my office home yesterday and a young man was running along the sidewalk by Gaetano's, Jodeez, and he actually had to jump over the leg for one of the tables, not at Gaetano's, at Jodeez, because they're not in compliance. There is no, no one right now in the downtown is in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay, that's not me.
I understand. But, but now what we have before us is not only we can't do what is required under the law on the sidewalk, we want to go into the parking lot. So, I mean, under the ordinance, and I brought this up last time, the ordinance specifically requires the outdoor sidewalk dining area must be separated from the remainder of the public sidewalk by a fence, railing, or other divider made of sturdy material. No one, no one in the downtown area has that.
Yeah, I, I don't know why either.
So.
Yeah, because they, it just, you know, it just, naturally, the, the tables and chairs get pushed out farther into the walkway. I mean, that's just going to happen by virtue of its use. And some of these tables are probably, in my personal opinion, too big. But that's going to happen, but I don't, I don't understand why there's no barriers either.
And when I look at the cafe statute, which is, I think it's statute 30-22N, it says in order to maintain your liquor license, you have to be in compliance with the local stuff. So everyone downtown can have their liquor license pulled. But here we are talking about, let's negotiate. I, I don't. Anyway, here we are. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I did make changes to the, that ordinance based upon your last ordinance committee meeting, so we'll catch up with that later.
That's all I got.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to state that I don't necessarily think that this is a permanent solution to a bigger issue that we have up there. I'm more or less supportive if we're allowed to do this, only as a sort of a stopgap for this year. I, I think we could probably put our heads together as a town, not necessarily us, and come up with a better option for that kind of activity uptown or, or elsewhere. I think that the concerns of the people who have businesses in Simpson Court with respect to access to parking and stuff are legit. But I also understand that, you know, the, as Councilor Carmody described, that the, the, the the feeling or the vibe or, or the, or the scene up there is, is encouraging and, and something that people really enjoy. So I, I, I view this as a way, as a compromise to sort of get this one over the finish line and then, but I'm not in favor of a permanent solution unless we can find a way to let everybody do it. So if we can let Center Street do it, I don't know how you do it on a state road, we could let them do it on Center Street, Hall Ave, wherever. If we could let everybody do it and they want to pay and we can put in, you know, planters and all that like New Haven does, by all, when we looked at the plans in an ordinance meeting, I'd be in favor of that. But I am not in favor of moving, doing this moving forward in that one location because there is, you know, an issue with there being, you know, equipoise, or that's the wrong word, with, with there being sort of like equal access to this service across town. And to Mr. Mayor's point, that night, I, you know, closing down Simpson Court and creating a public space with kiosks and such and fixing the parking behind there so that people who have challenges getting to the buildings would be a solution that we could probably all do. It's a one-way street that goes in front of, what, five buildings? You know, other towns by now probably would have turned it into a courtyard. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Allison? I'm sorry.
Reaching for the switch, first time back. All right. So I read about this after I watched the meeting I couldn't be at. And, you know, I largely saw this decision on the part of the council being classified as the council being against outdoor dining. So I did my own little study of restaurants that are doing outdoor dining still. We have, and I kind of just went in order of each side of the street. Knuckleheads, Archie's, Michael's, Library, Mr. D's, which is self-served outside, Le Hardin, same thing, Half Moon, Gaetano's, V's Knees. Center Street Lunch is not doing it this year, however, they have done it in the past. Tap & Vine has a patio, Los Mariachis has a patio, Seraphino's has a patio. It's very outside of, center of town. But again, if people are looking for outdoor dining options, I thought I'd name as many as I could come up with off the top of my head. 99 Restaurant, again, out of scope for center of town, but lots of outdoor dining. Outdoor dining that is kind of coming, La Piazza, I believe they have a new pergola on the side of their building. Fabio's is looking at maybe putting outdoor dining behind their building. 619 Social has made inquiries and they might be looking to do it in the front and side of their building. I'm not sure about El Coqui, but it's another new restaurant. And then one of the coffee shops out of two, Green Kettle and Cafe Lucabella. Cafe Lucabella has two tables outside. Green Kettle doesn't have enough space. So out of these restaurants, five of them, actually, sorry, seven of them are new in the center of town. The, my statement has been for the entirety of this conversation this year that this renting out of space or, or giving space to one to two restaurants, because I doubt Mr. D's is going to rent parking spaces. They don't serve, so I don't think they would do it. But to just, just two restaurants, Half Moon and Gaetano's in the center of town creates, while I get it that a lot of people classify it as something that brings business to the center of town, the reality is that it's bringing business to Gaetano's and Half Moon from a dining perspective. And it's driving, is driving business away from other restaurants in the center of town from a dining perspective. I get it too, that other, that people can't, I mean, there's a finite number of tables, right? So people will have to go to their second choice and go for drinks after or go just to the dancing portion of things. Library, sorry, one more restaurant does benefit from the activities in the center of town, just they would still benefit, which is the library. Sorry, I, I just want to be fair and include everybody. So I also understand that business can be brought to the, the restaurants across the street. However, by and large, they only have a certain number of tables. And all that I saw the last meeting doing was, was giving the opportunity to people, to other restaurants to have an equitable choice in outdoor dining. I dined outside last week at the Block Party. I dined outside. I've dined outside at two other restaurants this year so far. I imagine I'll be dining outside at others as well. My concern is that driving business toward the center of town could be creating a problem for businesses that are not in the center of town. I think about businesses that have closed in the last year or year and a half. And I wonder sometimes, had we not driven a bias toward people wanting to dine and hear the music actively in the center of town and be part of that festivity, did we create a situation for them where they closed? Now, we can all argue about whether or not the food was great or whatever. But that's, the reality is that if you're giving somebody a chance to survive in the restaurant industry, you would think you would give them an equitable chance to survive. So I, I love the food at Gaetano's. This is not a hit against Gaetano's. I know that to the supporters in the room, it feels that way. And it's not intended to be. I also love the food at Half Moon. I've eaten at both. I've catered at both. I, I'm, I'm simply trying to, with my thoughts, look out for the other opportunities that we, that could be missed by creating a funnel toward one area. And I don't know what I don't, I didn't know what I didn't know when we were doing this in the past couple of years. Having been a little bit more retrospective on it this year because of changes in the way that we wanted to operate, this is the, I guess, opinion that I've come up with. And I do, I have talked to other businesses and restaurant businesses in that area. And I do see the concern that they could have with business being funneled to one area. And this is not only on Thursdays, this is on weekends. It's every day of the week, every nice day that people can sit outside, they are going to opt for a place that has lots of seating versus a place that they may only get one of six tables. And so I love the spirit of this motion and, and I love the spirit of the town getting behind or the, the, yeah, the town getting behind having an opinion on which way this should go. I'm, I'm just not for it for a reason of equitability and the, or equity. And when I think about how we could proceed, let's come up with a better plan, an equitable plan for next year. I just don't think that this year is, we can't slap something together. And I also am trying to keep in mind the seven new businesses that we would be possibly doing a disservice to by driving business to one location every doing a disservice to by driving business to one location every nice day of the year, or of the summer. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Testa. It's my mistake.
Thank you. I, I had a lot to say at the last meeting. I had concerns about this from various perspectives, but from, very simply, I, I agreed that, you know, I, I voted to approve allowing it, what happened over the last couple of years to continue again for this year. So, and even though I expressed the difficulties I had with it, and I feel the same way. We should talk in depth about how to go forward after this year, but I'm still, I'm still okay with allowing something similar to what happened last year. When we, when the vote was over, and I played a lot of phone tag, then I knew other people were, were talking to, to, to the restaurant owners, and I said, okay, let's see if they come up with something. I, I had just thought to myself, you know, maybe we just, you know, we just move it down just a little bit, take two or three of the spaces, have them, take two or three less spaces, give a couple more to the spa and let them still have that whole end. And that was what I was going to propose as an alternative, but it didn't seem like that was going to drive any, anybody up here to change their vote. There's still a misunderstanding and that's not going to change. This is not about outdoor dining, there's outdoor dining everywhere, on the sidewalk. It's always been the case. It's not about being able to have music, they can have music at the end, there could be music, and we could still have stuff. It's about, we add the, add the extra tables in the, in the parking lot. It's not a roadway, I mean, technically I suppose it is, but it's a parking lot that we own. So it's not the same as allowing people to do this on an actual roadway. Not that we have any they could do it on. As far as I know, most of them are state roads. So we can't allow it on state roads. Other restaurants in town, they are, they lease in private parking lots. So if they wanted to do this in their parking lot, they'd have to have their landlord allow it, wouldn't require the town. Where might this happen if someone else wanted to do it? Well, I'm thinking maybe in the back where the brewery is, they might say, listen, you got this whole big parking lot you guys put up, I want to do, I want to do it there for me. But I don't think there are many other places where this similar situation exists. It was kind of unique anyway. But the benefit of it, and the, again, here we are with perception, the perception that everyone's like, oh, we're really trying to promote a lot of activity there, caused me to agree to allow it one more year while we talk about it again for the future. I still feel the same way. But I brought up last meeting that I had a problem with paying for it. And I, that's the problem I have with this proposal, simply because of the potential precedents that's... If we agreed to lease a parking space to one business, how do we say no to another? And I know we have a food truck ordinance, well, we have food trucks mentioned in our ordinances, but who, what's to prevent somebody to say, I want to, I want to, I want to lease spaces in the lot behind the old Wood and Kaplan lot, or down at the Brothers lot, I want to lease five of those spaces and put my food trucks down there, which isn't necessarily a bad idea. I think the Brothers lot would be a great food truck venue. But that's, that's part of an overall discussion about how we do this down the road. Mike, I have a little problem with that. My other question is, how many are you going to allow to be rented? Because that's not in the motion. If we say we will allow the businesses to lease those parking spaces, can they say, I want 12? So, you know, I, I was agreeable to allowing them to continue this year as they did last year. I was hoping maybe if we, again, shaved three or four of them off, that might appeal to the no votes up here. But I still wouldn't want to charge them for it. Because that sets a precedent, first of all, I think it's a lot of money, I don't think it's necessary. We're justifying doing it on some kind of principle, public interest principle. So it doesn't require, we can say we're, we're doing it because we think it's beneficial to the downtown, and we don't have to charge money. I, I believe that the idea of making them pay was another way of potentially getting some agreement from some no votes. But again, I'm worried about the precedent of doing it. I think because it's a parking lot, there's probably not a lot of areas where it could be a difficulty, but I mentioned the three big ones, so, and you know you're going to get it, it's going to happen. If I owned a food truck in town, I'd be there tomorrow saying, I want to rent five spaces behind the Sovac Center, and so on and so forth. So my question is, how are you going to, how many are you going to allow them to lease?
I, I don't know if all the restaurants want to lease them. I, I know that Gaetano's is here and that they would like to lease a few spots. I've heard Half Moon is probably interested in as well, so, you know, no more than what they've done in the past.
Well, that, that's important to point out, yes, because your motion doesn't include that, and I think if we, if we get more specific, that would help. Well, I'm just saying, you can do that, you can amend it, those are my concerns. I still feel the same way I did last, two weeks ago, or however many weeks ago. I'm okay with doing it again this year. I don't think we have to charge them for it. But if that's what it takes, fine, but we need to talk about a large-scale view of this going forward. I know a lot of people have said, why don't we just shut down Simpson Court altogether? That would be nice, but realistically, who's going to be able to serve food? You're not going to be able to run across the street from Archie Morrison and deliver food to tables. I mean, you could, you might, I mean, it's still just going to be a lot more room with a lot more tables, but, so that's not necessarily the answer either, you know? That doesn't do anything for any other restaurants in the center of town, in my opinion, unless they want to set up little, whatever, I don't know, food kiosks. But see, that's the kind of thing we could talk about, that we should spend a lot of time on, in an, starting in ordinance meetings. But anyway, I'm okay with the motion as long as it's limited to no more than last year, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Allenson?
Thank you. I agree with basically everything that Counselor Reynolds had said, and a lot, or almost all of what Counselor Allenson said. I was the one that was pressing and arguing for most of that meeting for the, for the leasing agreement in the 150, and I made the, the motion to amend. So I'll honor that position and, and remain here and support that motion as it is. I also would question if, if the wording of the motion should be left that the other businesses have an opportunity to come discuss, similar to what Janice, Attorney Small had said. I don't get the, the setting of precedent fear, leasing versus free. Free seems like a more dangerous precedent to me. And we are going to, we're going to talk all about it because we, this is going to have to be figured out by next year in our ordinance meetings. Because like I, like I said last time too, this is, this is kind of the last time for me, as, again, I agree with Counselor Reynolds. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else in the council? So, Counsel Tatta, please. So, I was just going to say, so, you know, this all originated from COVID, right? And so we had special, special exceptions for businesses all over town to try to keep business going during COVID, and I, I think that, you know, we did a lot of, business, government did what it could to help businesses continue, right? So then COVID ends, and we continued with this last year, and then, you know, you sort of find out that the neighbors and the, are not entirely happy, some of the neighbors are not so happy with it, and so on. And so now we find ourselves in the position where do we, you know, because we could talk about this is like for uptown or whatever, but this is really about one business, right? So now we're providing, you know, we went through this whole discussion earlier as a council about, the mayor wanted to fill a particular position, that we had an objection to the person, we, you know, people said, well, it's cronyism, and this and that, but I mean, I guess I'm not clear how this is different, because we've essentially picked one or two businesses and said, we're going to give them a privilege that we give no other business in town by virtue of the fact that we gave them that privilege in the past. And I guess that's the difference, is we gave them that privilege in the past, but I'm not sure how this isn't just the same element of cronyism, you know, that we had before. And so I guess those are my thoughts. Counsel Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I made the motion last, at the last meeting to, you know, continue it in the same, same space, I guess, or, or less that we had last summer, and the, or less was, because I thought if that passed, then the council could decide, you know, do we want the same or, you know, do we want fewer spaces taken up? So, so that's where that came from, and, and the reason I made the motion was just because I thought we needed, you know, let a nice thing continue happening this year until we can figure out a more permanent solution. But, you know, I do, I do agree with what Counselor Allenson said, I, you know, I'm concerned about the fairness aspect. For me, I think renting spaces pushes this over the edge for me where I'm, I'm not on board with it. I'm okay with us saying, let's continue it for this summer, just like we did, we said at the last meeting, that was my motion at the last meeting, and I'm okay with that still. I think renting parking spaces is opening a whole can of worms that I don't really think we want to, at least I don't personally want to, to go down that road. I think we're going to have other restaurants saying, well, you know, why, why can't I rent the space in front of mine? And, you know, and everything, you know, Counselor Testa brought up, food trucks, and I, I think that's, I think that's, we're getting into a, kind of a messy situation there. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I, in, I don't know if the law department or someone else could correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe Simpson Court is a, is a legal street, correct?
Yes, it is.
It is, right. I thought that the police department had told me that. So it's not, I know it has, you know, this, this idea that Simpson Court is, you know, this quasi, I don't know, it's not, it's not a road, it's the parking lot, it's not, that's a legal street. So I, I believe, again, I may be wrong, but for, for the police to, you know, shut anything down and put barriers, that's, that's just like they're closing off a part of a street. And so there's, you know, there's other issues that come along with that. So, you know, like I said, I was okay with the motion the last time, I'd be okay with that again still to continue it for this summer, just until we figure something out, but the renting the spaces, I think we're just getting into a, I think we're getting into a messy situation here, and I, I understand Counselor Carmody, I totally understand your rationale, I think, I think what Counselor Carmody was trying to do is get more people on board, and I know some of the counselors said, hey, if, if they pay, then maybe I'm okay with it. So I get where you're coming from, I do, and, and we spoke about this, but for me, I, I think it's just, we're, we're getting into a place where I don't really want to go. So that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council? Members of the public? Oh, I'm sorry, I recognized the lady behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for a broad yielding.
I've been sitting too long, so I'm limping. Anyway, I wanted to come, thank you, councilors, very much, to kind of straighten out some...
Oh, I'm sorry, Liz, your name and address.
I didn't identify myself, did I? Liz Davis, representing Wallingford Center, Inc., but resident at 3100 Det Drive, Wallingford.
Thank you.
So I wanted to come and just kind of give an insight on this whole thing, and just tell you what WCI represents and believes. So we, as an organization, that agents for many of the downtown businesses, all the downtown businesses, we are neutrally, neutral about the whole outdoor dining, Simpson Court dining. But what we do believe is, is that we have to be equitable to all businesses in the downtown area. So if you have one person, one business, that is completely not or can't do it, but in this area that you're looking at to, to promote or put these, be able to do the Simpson Court, then as the last administration, the mayor would say, if you get one person or one business that does not agree with it, then we have to kind of look at the whole thing. So although we're neutral, we want to do what's best for downtown. So when we talk about precedents, that we're setting precedents, whether certain, whether we can put tables on Center Street or, or any kind of outdoor street dining there, we, you can apply to the state and ask for it. The thing is, the town then says, well, it may be too dangerous, the police department may say it's too dangerous to do that. So we have options, it's just a question of where we want to go through this, where we want to go with it, excuse me. So I think the issue being is, is that if we can look at the entire thing and say, come up with a formidable, a formidable plan, sorry, tired, then yes, it should be something that, that we look at, but it can't be done in the 11th hour. And now we're in the 11th hour. So my point is, is that if, if whatever you guys decide, the WCI is behind what this town wants to do, and will promote however we, you guys decide, but futuristically, we have to address this a lot sooner. I started addressing some of this in the, in the fall, in the winter, and then, you know, we talked about it, and then there was not much of a decision until we got to the situation with the council is dealing with now. So I did, I do believe that we need to address this a lot sooner, if you're going to go forward. But we have to be equitable to everybody. So we just need everybody to understand that, that, you know, it's, it's important to us as WCI to get everybody on board, but to promote everybody, every business, every merchant as best we can. So I just wanted to come up and state that. Thank you.
Please, Ben, I'll go right ahead. I appreciate your patience.
I, so, did I say my name again?
If you would mind.
Two things that came to mind today, that's why I came tonight.
I'm sorry, if you could say your name again.
Betsy Bates, Maple Avenue, Wallingford.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
So we were just notified that TD Bank is going to be closing their branch in Simpson Court. So I don't know what impact that will have, I don't know, maybe some of the restaurants that are, maybe that can become a building with all different sorts of restaurants, similar to what's trying to operate now, I think is called The Hub. But I think having what was there, even if you just continue it this year, then go back to the drawing board, like Councilperson Tatta said, you don't know what's going to evolve, but it definitely makes Wallingford Center more of a destination spot. And it's not saying that we need other towns coming in, but it's a gathering place. And I just think that you should do everything in your power to keep that a gathering place the way that it is for this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is George Sharp, 521 North Elm Street here in Wallingford. Excuse me. So as a lot of you know, this past Thursday night, there was a, the block party up here in Wallingford where they shut down Simpson Court as well as North Main Street. And I, I got to say, there are, it was, it was a good turnout, and it reminded me of when they had the, every Thursday night with the extra outdoor seating, as well as the music with DJ John Roz. And it was, and yes, yes, it was, yes, it was warm, of course, it's summer, but it was a, it was a good turnout, and there were... And there were a lot of people, uh, dancing. Rick, my friend over here, we had a, a wonderful evening, and we talked about, oh, you know, we missed every Thursday night with the, with the, uh, music and everything. And, um, so my hope is that we can come to some kind of a solution where we can, uh, you know, brain, brain that, uh, back and somehow, um, you know, and I understand that there are issues. My ever hope is that we can come help some, you know, you know, come together and, uh, find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Myla, 2 Cortland Drive. I just wanna bring it up, the block party, I just wanna say-
I'm sorry, Ms., if you just, uh, speak into the microphone.
All right. Bringing up the block party, I just wanna say what happened Thursday night. Us, Half Moon, the library, and Mr. D's offer every week at no cost to the town and no, like, lot less parking that were taken up. They, they closed the whole street, the whole block. People couldn't park to go to Archie's, they couldn't park to go to Michael's. They, it's, we're just asking for eight spots to, to close off, um, spots that aren't guaranteed to anybody and, you know, they could take it up at any time. Plus, as far as leasing the spots, I'd like to offer an alternative. How about, I, I wasn't here in town for the last meeting, I believe somebody brought up that the cost to install those blocks and remove them was like $800. How about if we offered to pay for the, for the installation and the removal? Then it doesn't cost the town anything. And as far as being equitable to everybody, we, my sister and I, 20 years ago, were the ones that brought up sidewalk dining in Wallingford. We had, we, we brought it up to the council, it passed, so, so that was done. And then four years ago, we also went to, spoke with Tim Ryan, and we were able to, to get what is now what is the outdoor dining room, dining. And if, if other places wanted, they should do the same thing, just, you know, ask. That's what we did. But, um, there's one more thing I wanted to say. It's just, as far as being equitable, we have limited space in front of our restaurant. Half Moon has limited space in front of the restaurant. Archie Moore's across the street, the building owner allows them to put tables all across the front of that building. Michael's now owns that whole corner, and he has built, uh, uh, tables around that whole corner. So why is, it's not equitable to us or Half Moon that they were able to have all that stuff? And we can't have eight parking spaces for two restaurants or three restaurants? It just, as, like I said, if we can, maybe instead of the leasing, we can pay for the blocks, that's all I wanna offer.
Thank you.
Jason Michael, Meadow Street. Just real quick first, this $150 a month amount, that was formulated by a phone call to a storage facility as to what they charge to park a car there. I mean, that's, that's Mediterranean Avenue prices for Park Place. It's just not comparable. I mean, if you're gonna go that route, I would seriously consider that amount. Secondly, all of this, and I've sat through the meetings and, and been there and seen the, the good and the bad, this, this is an incredible opportunity. What happened, COVID and, and this, Wallingford caught lightning in a bottle. We see that something has struck a chord with lots of people. And it's an opportunity for us to get out of this creative bankruptcy lane we've been in forever. We don't think of great stuff like that, like on grand scales, not that, not that I can think of. And, and this is an opportunity to dig down and do the work and figure out something that can, that can give this, this feeling or this vibe, as the word is, that everyone's tossing around, in the Brothers parking lot, in the Wooden Capling parking lot. Everybody shakes their heads at food trucks. I don't know if any of you have been to, every food truck festival I've ever gone to has been madness. And I've always left town to do it. So you reverse that, and you'll be having people coming into town. You'll have them downtown, doing it at the same time. You know, six downtown, six uptown. And people are gonna walk up to the other ones. That's what you do at these food truck festivals. I mean, there, there are, there are ideas and opportunities we haven't begun to mine, and this is an opportunity that's, that this here is, is presenting itself, to be creative. Nobody wants to hear the word subcommittee or, or anything like that, I get it. But I bet there's people who are interested, who don't have a dog in the fight, that would wanna participate and give ideas and do the work. And, and, and if it produces something that can be more equitable, that's not wielding the hammer of government to help in the annexation of public parking spots for private profit, then all the better. Because that's essentially what we're gonna do here. You're gonna hammer down with a governmental speech that says, these spots are going to this company, and this company's gonna make tens, five figures, six figures over the next three months, four months. But these, these aren't. And I don't think government has any business doing that. But like I said, this has actually created an opportunity for us to do something great. We just have to think about it and toss the ideas around and not be afraid to try something big that will finally tie the two uptown and downtown together. And we have brand new parking lots, we put them in, spent all kinds of money on, nobody parks in the Brothers parking lot, nobody. It's empty all the time. We don't do anything with it. It's a perfect place. Just food for thought.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Good evening. Kevin Gaetano, 271 South Main Street. It's been a long night. I'm in favor of all what you guys are talking about, but I'm gonna be honest, I'm a little nervous. First of all, I wanna thank all of you for reaching out to my sisters to try to get this going. Because I think we all know it's a good thing. We're trying to be fair. Autumn, I, I respect what you're saying, um, but-
Mr. Gaetano, if you, if you could just lean into the mic a little bit more.
But there's pros and cons about what you're saying. Like Cheryl said, Michael's owns their corner, you know, great food, great place, it's uptown, he's got all around the, around the restaurant. You didn't mention Wooden Tap. Wooden Tap has a tent outside. They could get live music if they want, and they could do the same thing as they, as everybody does uptown. Thursday night was very nice. I'll be honest with you, I, you know, it was like going to a six, a 16-year-old birthday party, and I don't like to dance with a bunch of little kids, I rather dance when we have, you know, adults. And it's a Thursday nights, Friday nights, they have live entertainment outside. It's all, it's all a plus. But I'm, the reason why I'm nervous is when, when Tom Laughlin mentioned it last time, two weeks ago, about the $150, and the wolves came out. I mean, they were all, ah, ah. But now, he's for it, but now we're gonna lose you. So now, we're back to four votes, and I'm, I'm nervous. You know, Autumn, I don't know where you stand, I, I spoke to the mayor, you know, there or so afterwards, I saw, I'm sorry, saw him walking the dog, and now I understand. But, you know, Sam, Benny, everybody's been reaching out, everybody's trying to help. I really think, I agree, like, like Tatta said last time, let's move forward the way it was. Fishmine said, eliminate the, or last, keep it the same. And then let's talk about next year as far as $150. Personally, I don't think there's a problem with that. If they wanna buy spaces in front, like they do in New Haven, then let them do it. You're not, now you're not eliminating anybody. If Michael's wants to buy his spot in front, let him do it. He doesn't have to, he's got enough space. But Center Street, if they wanna, I know it's a state road, but like the gentleman said, New Haven does it, they buy, they buy a parking spot right in front of the restaurant? Yeah, is it dangerous? Ah, come on. It's just like a car park, there you put, put planters there. So I, I, you know, I think, with, with Tom said last time, you know, I think it's an opportunity for the town, but if we're gonna pay for it, we got him. If we're not gonna pay for it, we lose her. So now, we're in trouble. We're back, and we're in this vicious circle. We all saw the remarks on Facebook, I don't wanna go through all that crap, that's just ridiculous. You know, I think we all should, I don't wanna say do the right thing, because somebody said I was some of the mafia or something. But hopefully, you know, we put our heads together and we could get uptown the way we want it. You know, people come out, listen to live entertainment on Friday night, listen to Johnny Roz's stuff on Thursday night, they get live entertainment on Saturday, library benefits from it, knuckleheads benefits from it. They have people outside, they listen to the music. I don't think anybody really complains. Yes, I understand you're trying to bring people uptown, but you know what? They have, 99 Restaurant has a lot of seating outside with the tent if they do that, Wooden Tap. We're not taking from anybody. Well, not we, I don't own the place, but I listen to them. So again, hopefully, this works out. Again, thank you all for really putting it back on the, on the agenda, um, all of you. And hopefully, hopefully, we could get it to go this year, and then maybe we have a meeting in October, November to do something different where we get, we pay the $150. Again, I think, I think places are willing to do it. Why wouldn't you? You're getting extra tables. Right now, they have four or five tables, they're losing 10, you know, it's for not having the barricades. So thank you, and what a long night. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm back. I just wanna address the idea of food trucks, really? I mean, what kind of taxes do they pay for the town? And you're talking about being equitable, they're bringing up all this competition, that doesn't make sense. That's a silly suggestion, as far as I'm concerned. And one other thing that I didn't bring up is the, the business that having the outdoor dining brings in, it's, it's free advertisement for the entire area. People that didn't know that, say the spa was there, people that didn't know that Michael's was there, people that didn't know there was Five O's down the street, it's all free advertisement, and I just don't see why it would be a problem.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Rick Vitale, 141 North Whittlesey Avenue. I'd like to echo, uh, what a previous speaker said, and I guess several have said, that is, we've got an extraordinary thing going on here in town. I mean, I'm, I'm 80 years old, and, and this is something that is just new. I think we should take advantage of it. Rather than looking for a least common denominator to make sure that everybody is level at the same way, we should take this as a spur to look to enrich the town with further creativity. So I'm not in the restaurant business, but I have, I have a couple ideas, one of which was generated by, uh, my previous hometown, which is West Hartford, and that is rooftop dining, okay? Let's have more of that in Wallingford, okay? It's great. It is wonderful to dine under the stars, okay? There are places in town on Center Street that conceivably could have that. Let's do that. Another possibility, completely different, is to have town-wide, essentially Uber Eats service, okay? To have a confederation of the, uh, eating places in town and a kind of delivery service that works throughout town. And in general, I, for one, as a citizen, would like to sit and think about more creative ways to get business, businesses enriched here in town. So that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else coming back to the council? Mrs. Allison? No, he can't, he can't. I called on, I called on Mrs. Allison. Please go.
Um, so I do, I, I don't know what the outcome is gonna be tonight, because I think it's, it's a lot to consider, there are a lot of pros and cons. But, you know, I do wanna remind everybody that this was not the only thing that we do in the center of town. So as we know, last Thursday, we did a block party. In July, there's gonna be a summer sidewalk sale. August, in August, there's gonna be an end-of-season block party. Every Wednesday night, there's music by Town Hall, and people can opt to bring a chair, get takeout from their favorite restaurant, bring a picnic. And Tuesdays, it seems that there are food trucks and ice cream at the PNA, along with Johnny Roz. So there are many things that are still going on around town. This is, and this is not to say that we're against this. The, the problem that I see with it is that it's in, and I'm sure that everybody can disagree, right? You have a finite amount of space, depending on how much space you have essentially rented as part of your business. So Michael having a corner, Archie Moore's having the space they have, it all, uh, it's all relative to the amount of space that they're renting, I guess, on the inside as well. Michael owns the building, so, you know, it's a little different, but still. So you can't, you can't compare the two, really. And then, you know, finally, this is not to say that this is over forever, regardless of the way that it goes tonight. I think that there's a huge appetite to figure out a solution so that we can do better. I think food trucks are a good idea. I think, um, I think we're gonna be testing it out at some point with the Wednesday night music. I think that we should, as a town, start looking for other solutions to bring people into the town. And this was really great while it lasted, and I'm hoping that if it goes on again this year, I'm sure it's gonna be amazing again. If it doesn't, next year, well, I'm the chair of ordinance, so I can make meetings about this and talk about how we're gonna proceed with outdoor dining as we go forward, starting in September, October. Because it does seem like there is an appetite to figure out a plan going forward, regardless of what happens today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fishmine?
So just to address one of the comments from the, um, one of the members, one of the residents, uh, we do allow rooftop dining. In fact, um, 350 Main Street is, South Main Street is, is approved for rooftop dining. I think that was like four years ago, but they have, uh, not developed that. Even if something passed here tonight, can't do it for 20 days. There's a period through which, under our charter, those that are in opposition could collect petition signatures to have a referendum. So that is the simple fact of the matter. A lot of people don't know about our charter, but that is the situation. You know, the Wooden Tap situation is totally distinguishable here because that's their property. So what we're talking about here, what we're talking about is the utilization of government property. And we are constrained by the Constitution, statutes, things like that, to treat indiv- I'm not, it's not a bad thing, that everybody gets treated equally. Private business is not treated the same way. Private business can exclude to a certain extent. Government cannot. We open ourselves up to liability. The outdoor dining that presently exists, it's not a right, it's a privilege, created by this body. Before the council created the ordinance, no restaurant in this town had the right to have outdoor dining on the sidewalks. We fashioned an ordinance because we own the property, and we essentially have liability if somebody gets hurt on that property. We have a duty to protect the taxpayers from liability. We spent a lot of time, and I was up here, I think Council Testa was up here too, we spent a lot of time and a lot of meetings working on that. And there's not compliance. Not trying to be redundant here, but I'm concerned about liability. I would have no problem at all if, you know, in conjunction with the Twilight Tunes on Wednesday, we invited food trucks into Simpson Court. I mean, if it's all about the town, if it's really all about the town in attracting people, then you make an attraction. I mean, put food trucks in Simpson Court. I, I know there will be opposition to that because the existing businesses that are there are saying, no, we, we pay rent and we've got tables and all that stuff. But you can't have it both ways, quite frankly. You know, it, it's either about having tables and turning tables or creating an attraction. You know, i- it's either about having tables and turning tables or creating an attraction. And I'm all about creating an attraction. You know, I've been up here long enough that some of you, some of you don't probably, perhaps don't know, but knuckleheads, when it originally went in, came to us and said, it's not fair. We don't have enough sidewalk in the front to do outdoor dining that you anticipate for the downtown area. And what we did was, we said, okay, you have ownership interest in the back parking lot. We're going to allow you to do that. And we modified the ordinance to allow that because we were in support of outdoor dining on their property. Here, I would have no problem if, if the proposal was to allow outdoor dining in the rear. I, I, I think that's the same sort of thing. You know, and if, if, if that, the landlord wants to deal with them not having partitions and people tripping over stuff and no insurance and all that stuff, amen. That's, that's the situation. But what we're dealing with is government property, totally distinguishable. How do we handle that? And I just, I can't support on various planes. You know, the, the equal protection aspect of this is very strong. You know, I can think of other places in town that, that one could say, okay, you're being selective. I want to be able to do the same thing. And then we get into a problem because we're trying to be the nice guys. We're just trying to stay along with the law here. So, you know, when this originally started, the governor passed an executive order that mandated that this kind of activity could happen. When the blocks were originally put in Simpson Court, we didn't vote on that. It was a surprise. The mayor did it. There was one year, the one succeeding year, we did vote on that. And I did vote in favor. But here we are post-pandemic and we do have outdoor dining on the sidewalks. And the issue is government property and I can't support what's before us. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the motion?
Allison?
No.
Carmen D?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tata?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
And I vote no. Uh, the motion fails. All right, on to an item.
Can I make a motion?
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the arrangement that existed last year to continue for this season with the reduction of four parking spaces, which I could outline for you, but we're three parking spaces, I'm sorry.
I'll second it. Okay, motion made.
In effect, basically what I'm looking at is at the beginning of the Calcani Building or at the end of, right where the spa is, taking the, the next three and just leaving those. And it just about goes to almost, what's that?
Well, I'm, well, well, I'm, well, because I thought it was in front of you, so.
You weren't using those? Oh, up to the, up to the handicap spot? You weren't even using those? Oh.
All right, all right, order, order.
Actually, hold on.
Wait.
Here's what I was thinking.
Mr. Testa?
Money or not?
Okay. What I did was when I was looking at down, from Google, Google Earth. I was looking down and, um, I looked at the spaces that, right at the be, the end of the spa, you weren't going, you weren't going that far, you don't think it's, no. You were shutting off at the handicap spot?
Wait. Wait.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's right. If, so, so, all right, so two things. So, one, so the agenda item is leasing of the property.
Oh, all right.
And so now you're suggesting something that's different than what's on the agenda.
I was just trying to throw out one last.
No, no, I understand. And lastly, this is how we got into trouble, right? Because we sort of made ad hoc provisions at the, at the end.
Yeah.
Then we, it turned out we didn't have the authority to do.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
All right. Any other motions on this item? All right, then moving on to item number 13. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second.
Are motions made and seconded? Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, uh, motion carries. We are now in executive session. I'll call this meeting back to order. I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We're now in public session, seeing no other business on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.